Welcome and good evening to the Lewiston City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, January 14, 2013. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item of business is a pledge allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge. Gentlemen, please remove your caps.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start into citizens' comments, I'd entertain a motion to amend the agenda under public hearings and presentations to, before Ida Mae, will insert a presentation regarding the anniversary of the incorporation of the city of Lewiston.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we add that to our agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to insert the presentation in front of the proclamation regarding the anniversary of the incorporation of the city of Lewiston. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Next item of business is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items you wish to bring to the attention of council. We encourage you to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, we ask you to try to limit your remarks to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Ken Cron, 438 Crestline Circle Drive, here in Lewiston. I'm here tonight as a representative for the Citizens for Funding Accountability that led an initiative in November that passed by a 62 percent plus margin, over 8,000 voters in favor of. We're asking the council here this evening to please leave the initiative as it was printed on the ballot with no additions to that initiative. There's changes that the council wants to make and we don't think that's the right thing to do, being the people who read the initiative at the voting, voted on it, and in favor of it. So, we're just asking the council to please do what the people, 8,000-plus, voted in November. Thank you.
I'm not here tonight to talk about taxes for a change, so you can relax. Well, almost. Mr. Bennett, at a work session, has decided that he wants to include sexual orientation in our city personnel policies. And first of all, I'm a little bit of opposed to that. I want to read this. "In the United States, since the epidemic of AIDS began, 1,129,127 people have been diagnosed with AIDS. Approximately 619,400 people have died from AIDS in America alone. Since the epidemic started, if such an epidemic were to be caused by influenza, a national emergency would be declared immediately. Instead, we pass laws protecting the behavior so more people can die." And, Mr. Bennett, I think I would probably say to you, what part of 619,400 don't you understand? If you took the entire northern Idaho, maybe Spokane added to it, and eliminated all those people, maybe there would be enough, just make them disappear, that's about how many people have died from this disease. And yet, we, as intelligent people, are out here continually trying to support and encourage those that engage in such a behavior. And I want to just make this statement to you. 619,400 people. And if you pass these ordinances and keep encouraging this behavior, you're going to be directly responsible for their deaths, because you're not out here telling them that their behavior is not acceptable. From a social standpoint, do we want transvestites teaching our children? Do we want openly homosexual teachers teaching our children? Do we want to teach our children that such behavior is acceptable? Do we want a cross-dressing male to be a receptionist at our business counter? Do we want people running naked through our streets claiming it is a civil right? It is not a civil right. It's dangerous behavior, and we should try to curtail it and send a message to others that we're not going to support this behavior and we're not going to continue to put our citizens in danger by supporting this behavior. Thank you.
My name is Trey Turner. I live at 2424 14th Street in Lewiston, Idaho. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Bennett and Ms. Ropshire, and I'm not sure if it's proper for them to respond as I ask them, or at the end, how does that work?
We're here to take your comments, and it may be that they'll respond at a later time.
Okay, thank you. My first question would be, does the change in language to the city personnel policy affect private entrepreneurs and their operation of their own businesses? Or is it just the city government and that policy? My second question is, does the language in the personnel policy somehow provide extra benefits or advantages to homosexual applicants or employees over their heterosexual counterparts during the hiring, firing, or promotion process? And does the city personnel policy, or the new one, provide them extra rights as a group over individual rights, as has been discussed in the paper? I imagine that the answer to all of those questions is no. So, I also have some questions for the city council. One, do you think it is okay to refuse to hire someone based solely on sexual orientation? Two, do you think it's okay to fire someone based solely on sexual orientation? And three, do you think it is okay to harass, discriminate, or refuse promotion to someone based solely on sexual orientation? I hope that you all think that the answer is no, because that's what this policy is dealing with. Nothing more and nothing less. Thank you.
Mike Lorenz, 458 Crestline Circle Drive. I would just like to comment about the initiative that was passed last November. It needs just to be go-ahead and voted on by the council, how it was passed by the citizens. We don't really need the city attorney and the city manager trying to rewrite what was passed by the, you know, citizens. I mean, otherwise, you're just basically taking their right to vote away from them. I mean, if this initiative, good, bad, or indifferent, it doesn't matter, the people voted for it. It passed by a huge margin, unlike the Library Bond that didn't pass, and we went ahead with it anyway. So, I think you guys really need to remember that, you know, the taxpayers have a say. I realize you guys, the city manager and city attorney, only got an answer to four people. You don't really have to answer the taxpayers to keep your job. But you'd be, you know, well in mind that, you know, this initiative was passed by a huge majority, and you should just leave it alone as it is and pass it as it was written. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments this evening?
Hi, my name is Wilson Boots, 1621 20th Avenue.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Wilson Boots. You haven't seen me in a number of years, but finally got my ire up enough to get down here over this initiative. I think the council is totally misdirected as a whole. I'm not sure what you're thinking. This is not your city. This belongs to the people, and you're to represent us, and you're not. This initiative was passed, it is very clear, you need to just put it through, or you guys are looking at a recall, and I'll be the first one to sign it.
Any other citizens' comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings and presentations. First item is a presentation regarding the anniversary of the incorporation of the city of Lewiston. Counsel Orman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow is a very special day in the history of Lewiston. 150 years ago, the Washington Territorial Legislature established this as a city. We spent all of last year, really the year of 2011, celebrating the fact that we, a little over a year ago, celebrating the fact that we had the arrival of the steamboat here with Captain White on the 13th of May. That was the date that we recognized that the city was actually founded. But the paperwork that it took for the Washington Territorial Legislature to establish us actually was completed and signed 150 years ago tomorrow. That has a lot of interesting aspects to it. In the last couple of weeks, I think things have come home here in Lewiston. As we've started looking down the road, we have a replica of the first territorial capital downtown. We received our first check today as a participatory check from the very first Mormon settlement in Idaho, Paris, Idaho. Pretty exciting to get a contribution from them for the territorial capital. Lewiston isn't really the oldest city. As many of you know, Franklin and Pierce were out there before Lewiston, but we're the first incorporated city. That incorporation didn't last too long, but in the short period of time that it lasted, we had a mayor, Dr. Madison Kelly. Dr. Kelly was the first practicing physician who came in from Ohio. He served in a number of capacities here in the city. He even served as the treasurer for the county for a period of time. He was quite an interesting man who eventually would even make a plea along with some of his fellow citizens here in Lewiston to Washington, D.C., to make us part of Washington as opposed to making us part of Idaho. He was ignored, as the mayor said in one of his early speeches in his career here, was ignored by Washington D.C. at that point. The tenure of Lewiston as an incorporated city didn't last long, because we made a conversion very quickly into the Idaho Territory, which really forced the issue. Not only had we lost the seal to Boise, and had we, that was part of the short tenure, but all of the laws that were in effect for the Washington Territory were restructured when we got to the Idaho Territory. As many of you know, we're starting to celebrate the Idaho Territorial Sesquicentennial. We have a license plate out. There are at least 50 or 60 people in Lewiston who already have that license plate out there to celebrate the territorial, Idaho territorial founding. It took a few years until 1866 for us to get things back in order. Dr. Kelly was still here. The city at that time was plotted. It was one square mile, which is exactly what Clarkston is currently, as many of you know. The city went to about 11th. It wasn't a very large city. It was a small city. But if we look at the historical records, Lewiston was far larger than cities like Seattle and Olympia and Portland at that time. Idaho had a number of cities that were part of that whole Gold Rush era. So, as we look to tomorrow, I would encourage all of you to celebrate a little bit of Lewiston's history, take some time to go to some of the kiosks around town. I think you will find that our history is worth your time and energy. I am very appreciative to our historians, Steve Branting, John Mock, the long list. We could add Senator Mitchell, we could keep going, Butch Alfred, probably a list of 20 or 30 people, and we're going to recognize one of those this evening. So, Mr. Mayor, I hope that we keep tomorrow in focus and that we have a small celebration tomorrow downtown, that we'll say we're beneficial for 150 years.
What's the, where's the celebration?
Well, I don't know where the celebration is, but we'll at least have a smile tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Next item of business is proclamation. It's really an honor and a privilege to be able to do this for a citizen that's been very involved in our community and helps us enrich in our heritage and has done a great investment of his time, and we're far better because of it. Whereas, Gary Bush has served as a member of the city of Lewiston Historic Preservation Committee for eight years, from November 2003 to June 2011. And Gary contributed generously to historic preservation efforts by giving his time and talents. And Gary is very knowledgeable about the history of the buildings and people in the community. And Gary Bush provided wise counsel to the commission, and he's supported the Sesquicentennial efforts by conducting a lecture on the history of the different communities that resided in Lewiston in 1863. And whereas Gary Bush was an important communication link between the Nez Perce County Historical Society and the commission. I'd like to also add that he was a city councillor, and he conducts a lot of historical tours, and he's still involved in the community, and I'd like to thank him for that. So, now therefore, the Lewiston City Council do recognize and appreciate the outstanding services of Gary Bush to our Community and Historic Preservation Commission, and wish him well in all his future endeavors. Gary, would you come up and accept the proclamation, please?
Many of you know that our history depends upon those immigrants that came here, migrated here, some on the back of a mule with nothing more than a carpet bag, became millionaires. And you can go downtown and you can see a building that has the name Means on it, Mark Means, on the back of a mule. Many, many buildings downtown. The Historic Preservation Commission was put together by the city of Lewiston to do things that we can't do individually. They put together a prospectus on every building downtown. What's the history? How long? Oldest big building in the valley is from 1880, and it sits on the corner of Fifth and Main. And that man who built that was John Volmer. And he was an immigrant, and his father escaped from Germany in the 1840s. This, history of this town is exemplified by those buildings. You just have to walk down. The Historic Preservation Commission pulled together all the information. The Historic Preservation Commission sits on a panel to ensure that those historic buildings within the historic district are preserved as best we can, because if they're gone, they're gone forever. So, as we come across the Blue Bridge, there are buildings that date from the 1880s and 1890s, and some of those people are the pioneers of our valley and our heritage. And the Historic Preservation Commission is trying to expand that, not only the knowledge base, but expand that historic district and also preserve what we have on Normal Hill. And those beautiful, beautiful Victorian homes go back over 100 years. And again, it's a who's who's list of Lewiston's past. And I was very honored to be on that commission, very honored to walk downtown, very honored to tell stories anytime anybody's willing to listen to me. And it is a great way to walk up and down, have a cup of coffee, and look at our old buildings. The Historic Preservation Commission also puts plaques on those buildings, historic buildings, so that you can see the history, and we have a walking tour booklet that is given out by the city so that you can walk on your own and look at those beautiful, beautiful buildings. I appreciate the honor, and I don't think that I will stop being a member of those that want to preserve historic downtown Lewiston and part of Lewiston that is part of our history. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Next item of business is a public hearing for CPMA 0112 and ZC 0412. The applicant is Dan Young, I guess. Okay. Mr. Plaskin, you're here to introduce this issue to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to excuse myself from this public hearing as I have a conflict of interest.
Okay. I'm going to say that also, yes, Counsel Clebert.
By disclosure, a couple of things. I have been by the project site a couple of times, and Mr. Young is developing a project across the street from me. We had a little issue, and he did help me out with the water situation we had. I like Dan. I think he's done a fine job. I would like to say to the council, I feel I can render an impartial vote, but if anybody's uncomfortable with that, and I need to recuse myself, I'm happy to do so.
I have a problem. Does any other counsel?
No.
Okay, you may continue to participate, counselor.
Thank you.
And then, for disclosure, I know their engineer, head co-incorporated, I've in the past had dealings or business with them, but not in particular to this specific issue, though I do know Mr. Hammond very well. I also, as Counsel Clebert, feel that I can deliver an impartial hearing on this matter. Okay, with that, Mr. Plaskin.
Thank you. You've got two actions requested of you tonight relative to this application. One of them is a comprehensive plan land use map designation amendment, and the other one is a zoning map, zoning district amendment. And the reason for that is because the state and the city codes specify that rezones shall not occur for properties whereby the rezone is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. In this particular case, the property in question is designated by the comprehensive plan for future high-density residential use, and the inconsistency falls in that the applicant's request is to convert the property to commercial use rather than high-density residential. So, the first action you'd be looking at is the comprehensive plan map amendment, and then if you are able to determine that that is appropriate or the best thing to do, at that point, then the rezone should be considered, and at which point, the rezone would be consistent with the comp plan, because you would have already voted to change the comp plan map to commercial. Getting into a little bit more specifics, the property in question, and we'll look at some maps and some photographs here in a little bit. It's located in what's called neighborhood number four, or the West Orchards. According to the comprehensive plan, like I said, it's designated within that plan as high-density residential. Just going to give a quote from the comprehensive plan so that we can understand its role in this process. "The land use plan map is a graphic representation of the desired land use future for this neighborhood as an intended to be a guide for land use changes over the next 20 years." So, one of the things you'll be considering throughout your deliberations here is the fact that the property is already developed as single-family residential. I just want to point out that the comprehensive plan is a long-range plan, which is intended to require, in most instances, time and conditions and market circumstances to come into play to establish the goals and the projections and the policies of the comprehensive plan. Another document that is related to this consideration is a tertiary kind of document. It's called the Analysis of Impediments to Fair and Affordable Housing. We updated that in 2010, I believe, and it has within it, I think, some statements that I believe are, deserve consideration in the land use applications you're looking at tonight. It is documents like the Analysis of Impediments and the zoning code and the subdivision code that help us to implement the goals and the policies of the comprehensive plan. So, I'm going to give you some information out of the Analysis of Impediments. First of all, that analysis identifies that the number of housing units relative to demand may be considered an impediment in the city of Lewiston, and it recognizes that while the city cannot directly affect or increase the number of housing units, it can do things, take actions, and make decisions to help facilitate construction of additional housing units. It identifies that the city could establish an objective in the comprehensive plan to adopt land use regulations, procedures, policies, and practices, and potentially fee structures, which might more readily facilitate the construction of additional housing. It says that the provision of adequate amount and type of residentially zoned land, the allowance or encouragement of increased housing densities, support or preference toward infill residential development, the creation of or participation in programs which provide incentive for the construction of new housing are things which are encouraged by the AI for the city to do. It also talks about the lack of sufficient acreage zoned and readily available and properly located for multifamily residential development. It identifies that as an impediment to housing choice and affordability within the city of Lewiston. It says that the city should establish more acreage designated on the comprehensive plan future land use map for multifamily residential. So, not only should we protect what land we have designated for that now, but it's saying we should expand those acreages for multifamily residential. The Analysis of Impediments goes on to say that although there would appear to be vacant land available for rezoning to accommodate development of apartments, a reactive position by the city to such rezoning may be an impediment to housing choice and affordability. In other words, it says that the city should not only be, or should not rely on being reactive to support applications brought to us for multifamily, but we should be proactive in trying to pursue that. It identifies that Lewiston has a low vacancy rate. At the time, the Analysis of Impediments done, I believe, is approximately 3.6 percent, which reflects that there's an insufficient housing supply to provide adequate housing choice relative to demand. It says that if the demand for the number of housing units does not have sufficient supply from which to choose, a person may have to settle for housing that is substandard in quality, housing that is in a poor location relative to a person's needs or preferences, housing that is smaller than needed to comfortably accommodate the family, and/or housing that costs more than can be comfortably afforded. It might also be said that a low availability of housing units relative to demand translates to a higher tendency to discriminate against members of classes protected by the Federal Fair Housing Act. This low availability could cause owners and managers to be more selective in whom they rent or lease their housing to, thus increasing the chances of discrimination. For these reasons, the number of housing units relative to demand may be considered impediment in the city of Lewiston. So, obviously... So obviously, there's a very heavy emphasis within the Analysis of Impediments about the city needing to not only protect what we have in existence as designated for higher density residential, but also to try to expand that situation. And looking at the specifics of the property in question, and again, like I said, we'll look at some maps and some photographs. Currently has a single-family home and a large shop on it. It is .78 acre in size. According to typical, and it's flat, according to typical multifamily housing developments, if it were to be redeveloped with multifamily housing, it could reasonably and practically accommodate, I'm going to say, 14 units on it. Maybe more if it were zoned R4 and developed for apartments. I want to emphasize that it's the potential in the future that's what's important in considering the comprehensive plan. Like I said before, the comprehensive plan is a long-range plan, and you can't rezone property where it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, so there's a reason for that. Since the property in question is so close to Thane Road, it would be a natural transition as multifamily residential between the commercial development to the east along the Thane Road corridor and the single-family housing, single-family residential housing across the street to the west. The property in question has no direct access to the commercial corridor, to Thane Road. It's accessed off of the residential street that it fronts, and so if it's converted to commercial, and it's blocked, I believe, at least currently, from having access from Thane, it would have to be by easement if they could even obtain that. Otherwise, it would put commercial traffic on to the residential street. And you're going to get some information later presented to you by the applicant about the extent of that commercial traffic, and I'm going to recognize and agree that based on what the applicant says he intends to do with the property, that is not a substantial amount of traffic. But as I'll explain in a moment, that's not the point that I'm trying to make about why the property should not be converted to commercial. Matter of fact, I'll just get to that right now. As I explained, the Analysis of Impediments to Fair and Affordable Housing clearly points to the fact that the city needs to retain and even expand the opportunities for construction of additional housing, particularly apartments and other types of rental dwellings, because they tend to have greatest impact on the low to moderate income sector and the classes of people protected under the Federal Fair Housing Act. Additionally, the comprehensive plan has the property in question designated as future high-density residential. Just because it's not developed that way now doesn't mean that inherently it should be converted to commercial use. The Analysis of Impediments, like I said, calls for expansion of the land zone for multifamily residential. It does not call for the expansion of the commercial strip along the Thane Road corridor. The property in question is less than a quarter mile from a transit stop which would serve residents of future apartments, so it's just another item that shows that it might serve well for higher-density residential development. Higher-density residential development is not what's being proposed by anyone tonight. I'm simply pointing out that, and I don't think anybody's saying that the property in question is ripe for high-density housing at this point in time, but it is designated to be reserved for that purpose in the future whenever the conditions are right for that redevelopment of that property. Go ahead and look at some maps associated with these applications. The map on the screen and the map in the packets that you've got there, this is a copy of part of the comprehensive plan future land use map. There's a bubble around the property in question. The road that you see running diagonally through the map is Thane Road, and the brown coloration are those lands that are designated HDR, or High Density Residential, on the comp plan map, and the orangish color are the lands that are designated for commercial use. So the property in question lies just on the border of the commercial designation, but it lies within the high-density residential designated area. And then you can see further to the west of the subject property transitions over, and that's the typical land use pattern that you see in a lot of places, is a transition from commercial to higher-density residential to low-density residential. And so the way this comprehensive plan land use map is set up right now for this particular neighborhood is to keep within that traditional type of land use pattern. Next map we're going to look at, I'm going to have to rotate, because I don't like looking at maps that are not north up. We're going to go clockwise, I believe. Okay, this is a copy of a portion of the city's zoning map, and the property in question is bolded in red there in the center of the map. The blue coloration depicts to you that the property that you're considering tonight is currently zoned R2A, low-density, single-family residential. And the property in the orange color to the east is currently zoned commercial C3. So that's the current zoning in the area. The next one we're going to look at is an aerial photograph of the property in question and the surrounding properties. Again, north is up on this map. The property in question is bolded in red. Thane Road, you can see to the east, the property that the subject, or the road that the subject property fronts, Eighth Street, is running directly north-south to the west. And you can see there's an X in the lower left-hand corner of the bolded area, and the reason for that is the initial application included the residence, which the X that you see on this aerial is right on top of the roof of the house that's on the property. After the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the applicant amended his application to exclude that part of the property with the X on it from the application, and he's asking the city council to consider only changing the comp plan map and the zoning of the remainder of the area outside of the X within the bolded boundary. The large white that you see at the upper right-hand corner of the subject property is the existing shop that's on the property, and between the subject property and Thane Road, you've got Tri-State and parking lots for Tri-State and the Anytime Fitness Center. To the west across Eighth Street are single-family homes. The property to the northwest also has animal rights and has at least one horse on it. So those are some maps, relevant maps associated with this request. We'll go ahead now and look at some photographs of the actual conditions. This is a photograph looking due east from Eighth Street at the house that's on the subject This is looking northeast at the shop in the back picture there that's on the property. This is looking due east down the south property line. You can see the house next door also to the east, or to the south of the subject property. This is looking due east at the shop itself on the subject property. Again, I'm going to remind you that the house at this point is not being considered for This is looking northeast into the southeast, I'm sorry, this is looking southeast into the southeast corner of the property. It's to the side of the shop and the back of the house. I believe that's where the applicant would propose that the mini-storage units go. I don't know. We can ask him that later. This is looking down the east property line in a southerly direction behind the existing shop on the property. The pavement that you see behind the shrubs and trees on the left is the asphalt for Tri-State parking lot. This is a view of that parking lot right to the east of the subject property. This is looking southwest from the shop across part of the property. This is looking due south on the south side of the shop, down to the south property line. This is again a view of the Tri-State parking lot and the access situation, which does not exist. This is looking due west down the southerly property line, the house that's not being considered at this point for change, and then the neighbor's house here. Again, I believe that this is where the applicant might put mini-storage units. This is looking due north in front of the shop on the property. It's looking at the existing commercial use on the neighboring property to the north, the budget rental. This is another shot of that property, the budget rental next door. This is a view of the property across the street from the subject property. Actually, there's the horse that I was talking about. Single-family residential across the street, single-family residential across the street, single-family residential up and down the street except the budget rental, more single-family residential up and down the street, more single-family residential. So those are some photographs associated with this application to show you the existing And I guess I'll end my initial presentation with that and answer questions either now or later or both.
Counselor, any questions of Mr. Plaskin at this time?
Not at this time.
So we'll go ahead and open up this public hearing. We'll have the applicant speak first, and then we'll open it up for testimony. And then after that, the applicant will have a chance to address any of the comments during the hearing. So with that, does applicant have anything to address the council with on this hearing? We'll declare this hearing open. Name an address for the record, too, please.
My name's Dan Young. I live at 315 Shallow Drive in Lewiston. One thing I'd like to start with is, one of the amendments was, we tried to, can you pop that picture up that's on the computer screen right now?
Mr. Plaskin.
We went ahead and excluded the house that is currently there, a single-family residence. Another part of the amendment is the usage of C3, commercial zone, and I believe that's a, okay, thanks. I don't know if you have that in your comments section, but the laundry list of use for C3 is pretty extensive. And so trying to be sensitive to the neighbors as they came forward and gave their public comment, I think I'll put this up on this screen. That's kind of difficult to read, but according to the C3 usage, it's, there's 20 different uses of C3, and it's pretty extensive. I cut out the vast majority of those uses. There's manufacturings allowed, bars, that kind of thing is allowed, and I have no interest in doing that. And some of the things that the neighbors raised were legitimate. You know, I don't want to live across the street from a bar when, okay. You want to go back to the computer screen? Joel popped that up for us. So here's the list. So the first seven things on the list are drinking establishments, eating establishments, financial institutions, et cetera. The ones that are highlighted are the specific uses that I would like allowed. According to the Idaho State Code, and Joel can tell you where this is located, you can do what's called a contract zone change in a commercial area. It's the equivalent of a conditional use for a commercial piece of property. So there's five things remaining on the commercial side. One is mini-storage, personal services, professional and business offices, residential use is legally established as of 2004, and retail, sales, and services. So the neighbors came forward and said, I don't want to live across the street from a bar, and I guess I don't disagree with that. So I wanted to be more specific exactly with what the usage of the property was going to be. And the reason that I amended this, and I consider this kind of an appeal, is coming from PMZ with a negative vote, is the vote was three to two, so it was close enough to warrant coming here and having this conversation. And I think with making these changes, I'm hoping that it addresses the needs of the neighbors. One other thing that I had done, and I'm going to go ahead and pass these out to you I employed Sue Weaver, who's a professional engineer. You guys may or may not be familiar with her, but she's done traffic impact studies in and around Lewiston for a number of years, and she went ahead and did an impact study for us. What I'm specifically looking at doing is building some kind of a professional office in front of the shop, and I just guesstimated a square footage, and I said, what if we had 12 mini-storage units somewhere on the property? The shop is already set up to be four mini-storage units. It's got the doors, and it would be pretty easy to do. So we would be adding potentially another eight storage units. So she did a traffic impact study, and according to her numbers on the second page of the handout that I just gave you, it would generate seven vehicle trips a day, which I would consider that negligible as far as traffic flow goes. And to address the R4 issue in the comprehensive plan, according to the .78 acres and the way the city of Lewiston ratios are arrived at, it's allowable for 18 multifamily units. And, you know, if I lived across the street and I had a choice of a professional office with some mini-storage generating seven vehicle trips a day versus a high-density apartment building, I would probably lean in favor of the professional office with the mini-storage. The one other thing that's important to note, and I want to throw this up on the screen, is this piece of property right here, it's outlined in orange. That piece of property was a part of the comprehensive plan, and there was a single-family house on it, and it was changed in 2005 for the expansion of Tri-State building and parking That's basically the same thing that I'm doing that was allowed in 2005. It sort of set a precedent for this piece of property. I've got another map. So that piece of property that I'm talking about is right here. So in 2005, that piece of property would have been the same color as the rest. So my two pieces are right here, and they are two separate tax parcels. The shop is on the 3109, and the house is on 3113, and it's already platted that way. There's no replat or change to that at all. So this piece of property right here would have been the same color. It was considered residential, and it was changed through the comprehensive plan and zone change in 2005 to accommodate Tri-State. Now, the argument is that it has access off of Thane, and I guess I would strongly disagree. It does have access off of Thane, but what they did is they put an inlet-outlet right here to the parking lot, and it actually had a house sitting on it. They pulled the residential house that was sitting on it. They expanded the building and put a parking lot in. Now, there's houses, residential, R2 houses along this side of the street, that were directly fronting that, that now they have to take the impact right there on Vista. Vista is a small street. I don't know what the right-of-way on it is, but it has to affect them, and it was approved. It's sort of set a precedent. Now, going back to the Eighth Street, Eighth Street is a 60-foot right-of-way street, and according to the city standards, residential collector street requires a 60-foot right-of-way. A commercial street requires a 60-foot right-of-way. A commercial street requires a 60-foot right-of-way. The design standards for a residential collector street and a commercial street are the same standards. So I think mid-block, multi-use does not make any sense. As far as the AI goes, the impediments to multifamily, I just... I don't see a multifamily, high-density apartment complex going into this location, whether it's now or five years. I mean, I can't see the future, but 10 years from now, 20, I just don't see an apartment complex going into this piece of property. The other thing that's sort of a precedent right now is there's budget rental right here, and there's... They rent out the trucks and the trailers, and there's no front to that along Thane. So currently, my piece of property at 3109, which is considered residential, is being directly impacted by this. As they come and go with their trucks and trailers on a regular basis, there's no fence, sites obscuring fence along this side. So all of that commercial impact is currently being felt by this piece of property. So my proposal is to take what's there now, leave the house as is, and just basically connect to the piece of property that's already been turned commercial and join it around this side. So my piece of property here and my rental property would be the buffer between those two things. And if I was a fortune teller, I would say that some point in the future that this whole block should probably be designated commercial. And to do a good multifamily, numerically, I think that there's not enough space to do it. There's just... You need more space for parking. Unless you go way up in the air with like a three-story or something, there's just not room to accommodate it. So that's why I made the decision that I want to be sensitive to the neighbors. We'll leave this house residential. And, you know, there was a lot of emotion that went into the planning and zoning meeting as far as quality of life goes. And so they were concerned about, you know, this commercial enterprise is going in here. It's going to create all of this traffic flow and commercial use. That's why I paid a professional engineer to tell us that it's going to generate seven vehicle trips a day. And I did a quick history, and one thing that's really important to note is that Walmart was there, and now Walmart is not there. So Walmart opened up in July. The CFO was issued in July of '93. And a traffic impact study was done in 1996 by the City of Lewiston. There was 2,300 approximately vehicle trips a day. In 2004, another strip was laid out. There was an average of 4,000 vehicle trips a day. And then again in 2006, along the top there, there was another 4,000. So it kind of set the precedent, or the average, that there's about 4,000 vehicle trips a day. On the bottom side of that is where the properties across the street changed hands. So during the height of the occupation of Walmart, a house across the street, and then the little house down the road, across the street from Budget, also changed hands. So the owners of those pieces of property had the opportunity to move, to leave, to not purchase those when Walmart was generating all of those vehicle trips. Now, there's no current traffic studies. There's... I don't have any current data, but it's pretty easy to see that there's not as many cars going along that road as there were when Walmart was there. It's definitely decreased. So an additional seven vehicles a day just doesn't feel like a lot of weight to me. I think that's all I have.
Any questions from counsel? Yes, Counselor Daniel.
Dan, so that's seven trips. That's based on 100% occupancy, is that what I...
Yes, sir. Yeah, she said she did it aggressive to assume 100% occupancy, and then all 12 of the mini-storage units were rented out.
Okay.
Any other questions, Counselor Cleaver?
Just to clarify, it's what the... I believe the term is trip ends. So when you're looking at it realistically, it's four trips will be entering, three trips will be exiting. So it's not quite seven separate vehicles coming and going.
So the point is on that is basically it would be four vehicles would come, and then four vehicles approximately would leave. I was looking at those numbers, and I don't know how the same number can come and a different number can leave. That didn't make sense to me, but it's based on averages. Somebody's staying the night or something, working late.
To clarify, and Joel could probably, you know, expound on that, but typically that was the number that was used. Instead of a round-trip type of number, they used trip ends. And I don't know if it was a scare tactic, but somebody wanted to put in a child daycare facility, and then all of a sudden, the trip ends was like 30. Well, it was really, it was 15, you know, in the morning and then in the afternoon. But when you start multiplying it out because of each, you know, you park the car, go get the kid, come back, that's each one's a trip end.
Okay.
So the numbers go up.
Any other questions from counsel? Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change?
Thank you, Mayor Poole, council members. I'm Ron Bluit. I'm an attorney in town at 301 D Street. And my clients, Debbie Lewis and Tom Fisher, thank you as well. They asked me to say a few words to you about the application. The first thing I want to say is that my clients have no... nor myself have any ill will toward Mr. Young, and that's not why we're here. We're here because my clients, who own the property across the street, this was the property where the horse is and the residential home is, have substantial interest, a financial interest in their property, and they wish to preserve that interest and not have commercial businesses come in across the street from them. If you'll bear with me, I'd like to put this in perspective and then address some specifics, if I may. To put this in perspective, there are some times when a zone application is a good idea. I'd respectfully submit that this is not one of those times. First of all, the city staff recommended against this application. Second, all the neighbors who testified at the Planning and Zoning Commission opposed this application. Third, the Planning and Zoning Commission ruled against this application. And fourth, the city staff still opposes the application, and these neighbors still oppose the application. What then are the specific concerns? Isn't there something more to this? Please let me, if you will, please bear with me, and I'll run through a quick laundry list. First of all, this is not just a simple zone change. Sometimes you can have a zone change. You might bump something up from an R1 to an R2 zone and make a change. That's not what we're doing here. The change here is so substantial that it requires a change in the city's comprehensive plan. And that comprehensive plan is something very carefully prepared, and you don't usually get that with a zone change. This is a substantial matter. Second of all, this is not just a simple change bumping up from one zone to another. This is a change jumping up four zone classifications, going from R2A clear past R3, clear past R4, C1, C2, all the way up to a C3 zone. It's a very substantial change there from what has historically been in that neighborhood and what the current zoning is. So you've got not just a change, not just a zone change, but a zone change that's bumping up several zones. And it's not just a change for zoning, it's a change in the city's comprehensive plan map. Third, this presents some practical concerns for the residential neighborhood, which is established. And I respect and appreciate Mr. Young's proposition that, and I get it, he just wants to do some specific things on this property, suggests that it won't be that big of an impact, and he needs the zone change to accommodate those specific things. But here's the problem. Once you make the zone change, then it's Katy bar the door. That zone change, if you allow the zone change, which is proposed here, for example, in what is specified here, to allow retail sales, then it doesn't matter what the current intention is that is expressed as use of the property. You've got it. Somebody wants to put in a grocery store, a hardware store, maybe a camp cabin and home, whatever retail sale or service, that's in there too. That's in the zone, retail sale or service. Roto-ruder services, whatever it might be, once you make that zone change, those things specified there will be allowed. Furthermore, and Mr. Young testified, and to his credit, tried to make some changes, I'll address that in a minute, that people didn't want a bar across the street from them. Indeed, that's true. But people also testified at the prior hearing that they didn't want mini-storage units across, and then with people coming in banging around at all hours of the night or early in the morning while they're... On their Saturday morning sleep-in or whatever the case may be, or maybe trying to have a barbecue, or playing with the kids in the front yard, or running their bicycles up and down the street. These were things that were expressed as concern as well. Fourth, I'd respectfully suggest that it's a poor policy for the council, and you may recall the map. This would set a poor policy and a poor precedent for the council. I'd like you to... I won't show it up here on the screen again. I'm not sure if I'm a technical enough whiz to do that. But you could recall the map along Thane Road. And if it's going to be a precedent of this council that you can change that map and turn commercial areas that don't front on Thane, but rather front on the residential areas. If you can turn that just because they back on a commercial area, then that's the same argument that could be had all the way up and down Thane Road. It is a bad precedent for the city council to make that change. Fifth, I'd... And I'm coming in on the home stretch here, if you'll just bear with me. I'd respectfully suggest that there's a severe legal problem with the procedure that's proposed here. The law requires, the city code requires, that you take your applications to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission then issues a recommendation onto the city council on those applications, and then the city council votes on them. The application that you have before you right now has not gone to planning and zoning because it was amended after planning and zoning. It would be improper for the city council to vote on this application or to approve this application because it hasn't gone to planning and zoning. And sixth, the... This would earnestly create an impermissible spot zone. And if you'll just bear with me, one last minute, and think of this. If the situation is so tenuous that you have to take a C3 zone and then narrow it down, crossing off all these things that you can't have in it, and have some type of arrangement where you're trying to fit this square pig in this round hole, I'd respectfully submit that maybe there's something wrong with this. Maybe it really doesn't fit. And while, again, we certainly don't have any ill will toward Mr. Young, there were some comments about, with respect to Walmart, people not having to buy here and invest here, but the people who have come and objected to this are people who have been there before Mr. Young. And with respect to him, and with earnest respect for him, and I admire his entrepreneurial spirit. But these people were here in this residential area beforehand, and it just doesn't seem fair for somebody to come in and then wish to change that. So for these reasons, and earnestly I do appreciate your time, for these reasons, we asked on behalf of the neighbors across the street, Debbie Lewis and Tom Fisher, that the council take full consideration of the fact that the city staff has recommended against this, that the neighbors testified against this, that the Planning and Zoning Board voted against this, that the city staff still recommended against this, that neighbors directly across the street, my clients still oppose it, and that... Well, I won't go through the whole litany. I earnestly do very much appreciate your time and very much appreciate your courtesy and your willingness to hear our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yes.
Do your clients recognize that Mr. Young also has a financial interest in his property, just as much as the neighbors?
Yes, absolutely, he does. He has a financial interest in the property, and the council should consider everybody's financial interest. The distinction which I would respectfully request you to consider is that my clients were planted there first. Mr. Young then came in later, recently, as I understand it, and wishes to make a change in something that's been previously established, not just by city code and city zoning, but by the neighborhood and the people and the families that are there.
Counselor Cleaver?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Bluit, just an observation, though. Current neighbors to your clients consist of a radio station, a mattress store, and a truck rental operation right there. I understand the neighborhood concept of the thing, but, you know, the nature of that street has changed substantially, even with the absence of Walmart. And I think they know the impact that's been on their street since this has all happened. So I'm not, you know, saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, but I think it's kind of a stretch when you're only talking about another, maybe another 100 feet of potential development at a low impact. So I guess that's just the way I'm looking at it. I haven't made it my mind yet.
Yes, sir. Would you like me to respond?
Sure.
And I appreciate those thoughts, and you're right, that there are other commercial facilities that are not too far away. However, those commercial facilities are consistent with the zone. It's consistent with what people thought and understood when they bought in their properties and when they decided to make this area their home or their investment. Secondly, with respect to particularly the budget area right across the street, that has been a real problem for the residential area, and it's already burdened with that. I don't live there. My clients have expressed concern and testified at the Planning and Zoning Commission that the vehicles driving across and backing up and beaten around were a problem there. I respectfully submit that that's a problem that would be exacerbated if the zone that everybody relied on is now changed. Valid point, valid response, I believe. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Daniel?
I guess my take on this is, you know, when your clients moved in there, did they think they were going to be able to dictate what their neighbors did for the rest of their lives just because they were the first ones there? I mean...
No, sir. No, sir. Nobody thinks that. What I do think is this, and I respect your thoughts, and what I do think is this, is that when zoning is established for a reason, and when people move in, they move in based upon current zoning. Now, certainly that zoning can change if it's a good and judicious idea to change it. We submit that in this circumstance, and for the reasons stated, it's not a good and judicious idea. This is why the city staff has recommended against it, why Planning and Zoning voted against it, why the neighbors are opposed to it. Certainly, everybody has a stake in the game. Earnestly, on behalf of those residents who live in that area, they're very concerned with this. And again, you changed to C3, she's Katy bar the door. Maybe there's something here that, just as I suggested, doesn't fit. If you've got to take this square peg of the C3 zone and whittle it down so far that it's not really a C3 zone, it's something different, rather a spot zone, then maybe something here isn't fitting and isn't working. This is a...
Any other questions from counsel, from Mr. Bluit? Counselor Randall?
You expressed concern that there might be a legal problem, whereas he went to the Planning and Zoning, got turned down for his... Planning and Zoning, got turned down for his particular presentation that he had, and then he modified it, amended it to bring it to council.
What is the correct procedure on that?
I'll explain why I forwarded the application, the amended application, to the city council. And then I'll let the city attorney respond to correct me if I'm wrong. But I agree, it is an amended application. However, it's clearly the intent of the Idaho code and the city code that notification to the public on these types of applications is a priority. And it's because of that that we're required to post the site seven days before the hearing. We're required to publish an ad in the newspaper a minimum of 15 days prior to the public hearing. And we're to mail a direct notice to property owners within 300 feet of the boundary of the property in question. In this particular case, the requ, the, the size of the property in question shrunk. And so it did not expand that boundary to require additional notice. Additionally, it decreases the intensity and the impact potentially of, of the, of the change because it's taking away a portion of the property. And so therefore, the public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission level was for something potentially of greater impact than the proposal in front of the city council today. And so because of those reasons, it's my opinion that this is still a proper hearing.
After we have the testimony, we'll follow up with the city attorney on this issue.
I would agree with Joel on this issue. He probably doesn't believe that, but...
Okay.
That's one. Yeah, it, well, it's conceivable based upon the facts that have shrunk the area, that the Planning and Zoning Commission may have reached a different decision. They could have reached a decision to approve it. There certainly isn't any expansion or more intensive use that's being requested. It's a less intensive use. So, I think that the ultimate result is, maybe they could have voted to approve it based upon what he has now. But what you have before you is, is what he's requesting basically is some kind of a contract zone that makes it a less intensive use.
Is there anyone else? Is Mr. Bluit, are you done with your testimony?
I, I am. I didn't know if you wanted me to respond to that or not, which I, which I may or may not at your discretion, sir.
Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Very, very briefly. The, the code requires not just that the public be notified, but that Planning and Zoning vote on it and, and issue a recommendation here. And that hasn't happened as to this amended plan, number one. And number two, it is currently in common ownership, but the amended plan is more intrusive to the adjacent residents that was pulled out of the plan than otherwise. And even though it's under common ownership, it may be today, but it may not be in the future. Zoning decisions are not made based upon ownership. They're made based upon good public policy and planning. And so council and I have a respectful, respectfully disagree as to that point. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify for or against this issue? Name an address for the record, please.
James Addy. I live at Lapway, 25492 Heritage Road. My wife and I own the Budget Truck Rental next to the applicant's property.
Mr. Addy, could you spell your last name for me?
E-D-D-Y.
E-D-D-Y. Eddie? Okay. Thank you.
I haven't met this gentleman, but I just want to say that I've been in business in the orchard since 1975. And on that corner, since the late seventies, we previously had the mattress outlet, the whole area there. We lost our lease. We had to move back to that corner and we are, you know, kind of bunched in there in a little bit area there. But when we got approval from the city to move our building to, to that land which we purchased years before, I was told by staff at the city building department that the original, or the ultimate goal was to have all of Eighth Street from Stewart to Vista on the east side, Zone C3. So, and I, from what I can see that this gentleman wants to do, I, I, I can't really see that he's going to hurt anything because it was a eyesore junkyard next to us. It may have been a residential property, but it was a junkyard. And, and from what he sounds like he would like to do, I can't think that that would hurt the neighborhood at all.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify for or against this issue? Name an address for the record, please.
Tracy Story. And I live at 3106 Eighth Street. I do live across the street from Budget and Proposed Property applicant. I'm a little concerned about this. I have a few, a few concerns. One is that with the intent of it turning into a mini storage, I'm concerned about the clientele that will be coming and going from there. And as the attorney had mentioned earlier, also what hours that these people may be coming and going. So, it won't be just an eight to five access, I'm, I'm assuming. So, I'm also concerned about the clientele that will be coming and going, whether it will be via automobile or it could also be on foot. We do have some foot traffic on Eighth Street. And that makes a concern for me, not only for myself and safety, but also for the families that are, are around my area. So, I'm concerned about the clientele. I'm also concerned about the frequency that this clientele might change use of these mini storages and what they'll be using the mini storages for. And so it, it brings a lot of concern. Also, I, I do live across the street from Budget and I also live across the street from this, this proposed property. And as the attorney had said earlier, we have had issues with Budget. There are trucks coming and going and using my property that I live in as access to their large, very large trucks. They come in and out of my driveway. They park in front of my street or in front of my home. They also access my neighbor's property. And, and it hasn't been given permission to do that from me. And I know the owners of the property that I live on have seen this as they've come and gone too on the property. I'm concerned about the clientele that will be coming with this storage unit, what type of people will be trespassing on my property. And so I'm, that's one of my other issues that I have. I'm also concerned about the traffic that will be coming and going in regards to the children that are on our street. We do have kids that ride their bikes, that walk up and down, that are directly next door, and then also across the street that are next door to me and next door to the applicant's property. And, and even though his intentions right now are to have this small business and, but who knows what might happen two years down the line. So, if we do open this zoning up and say his business is not as lucrative as he wants, or if he needs to make some sort of a change, this has now opened it up for other future businesses to come in. And it could open, and, and I'm not ma, I don't know how clear I am, if it could be a multifamily unit, or it could be a bar, it could be some other type of retail business. So, I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I do have a horse. I do have activity. I have family members that come and visit me. And so I'm concerned about what could be coming across the street. And what I think gives me biggest concern is if we do allow this to happen, it literally will force a lot of the homes and the families of those homes that have been there for many, many years pushed out of that neighborhood because they don't want to be surrounded by other businesses. And as the attorney was saying earlier, is that yes, when these homes were, were bought, such as my home in 2008, they were aware of it, you know, of, of what the zoning was, but they were keeping a foundation there. The reason why that property sold is primarily because the elderly man passed away. It wasn't because of any other reason. The people across the street, the property that this gentleman has acquired, it's because one of the owners has passed away and the other one has gone into an elderly home. And so it, it's not so much by choice that these people are, you know, having to make these moves, but it's because of, of what's happening with age and time. And so I'd like you guys, please, council, is to consider the families that are there and that would like to stay there. But I'm concerned that this is going to force these families out of this neighborhood if we continue to open this zoning up. And so please consider that, city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Fisher. I was representing earlier with Ron Bluit. I'm the owner across the street of the proposed site. I'd just like to say one thing about it is that on the, on the thing with the Budget rental car, when we did buy the property back in 2008, that is one concern that we had about having across the street, there is the, is the Budget Rental property trucks there. They were parking our property. The house was vacant for, for several years, or a couple of years, I guess, after the gentleman, Mr. Knudsen, passed away. And they kind of invaded onto our property when no one was there and parked their trucks and that. So, we're a little concerned about having another commercial property across the street. I know Mr. Young was saying about mini storage boats coming in and out of that area there, other RVs, that type of thing. I have not seen a decrease in traffic since Walmart has left there. And I think the same amount of traffic is still going on there. I'm a little concerned. I've seen kids going up and down the street. There's a bus site on the top of the street there on Preston, I think it is, on the corner there. And I think it'd just add more traffic to the area. And we bought this place as an investment, but not to turn it over into a high-density residential. We're planning on maybe retiring there in the future, but we definitely wasn't going to turn it over into any other type of commercial development or anything like that. We was planning to be there as a single residential unit. So, anyway. Thank you.
My name is Patricia K. I live at 3112 Eighth Street, also directly across the street from the property. My driveway would probably go directly into Mr. Young's driveway. And I also have a problem getting in and out with the traffic that's there now. But mostly my concern is some kind of a change in Mr. Young's business made him want to expand to where he is. And if his business increases, then what's to say two years or five years from now, he doesn't sell out and go somewhere else? And then who knows what the next owner would propose and what this zone change would open up for anything. I don't know what his, he narrowed his list down to five things that he might do, but then what's to say we don't open those other 15 or whatever was eliminated, again, to, like we say, whatever businesses may or may not be proposed for that site. These are, I have lived in that location for almost 70 years. And the radio station was there. There was a service station on the corner behind where Budget is. And those things were there before we moved in and it became a nice residential area. And we would like to keep it that way. Thank
My name is Shelley Kylie and I live at 3114 Eighth Street, which is directly across from the property the applicant is trying to change. I have lived there for almost 12 years. I bought the house from my grandparents, so I have essentially been there all of my life. What he is trying to do is not necessarily a horrific thing, but as everybody has said, what it could be changed to in the future. I have children. There are other children that live on the street. And the traffic is bad now. And it isn't just because of Walmart. Walmart has changed. SEL coming in there. We have lots of traffic that comes down our street already from that. And to add more traffic is not good. I mean, sometimes it takes me more than five minutes, excuse me, to get out of my own driveway. So, it is, it is not a good decision to put in more commercial. The commercial that's there on the end, I mean, essentially doesn't affect Eighth Street. And the mattress store, the radio station has been there for longer than I've been around. You know, I bought the property because it was my grandparents' house. They, my grandfather died. My grandmother moved into a nursing home and wanted to keep the family in the home. The zone change on Vista for Tri-State was actually fought by neighbors, but lost. But it was fought. It was fought hard. And it, you know, it wasn't something that wanted to be done at the time. We have animal rights right across the street, which we actually helped the new owners keep as the past owner died and those animal rights could have been lost. We want to keep it residential. I don't want to lose property value because everything across the street has become commercial. You know, if, if this changes, I will probably sell my house. I don't want to live in a commercial zone. Thank you.
My name is Michael Kylie, 3114 Eighth Street, straight across from the zone. As my wife just said, you know, when I bought my house, I didn't envision a storage unit being across from it. You know, as when you, everybody goes buys a house, you kind of want to see what's going on. And that's not really what I envisioned going in. I liked my quality of life there. I would really, really like that, you know, if, if it didn't change. I understand change isn't inevitable. It's going to happen. But, you know, I, I do oppose this. And thank you for your time.
Mr. Randall, is there any other testimony for or against this plan amendment and zone change? Mr. Bluit, I think, would you mind coming up again? We have a question from the counselor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bluit, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
A number of the people who have testified have mentioned that they purchased this property as an investment. Several have mentioned that they plan to live in it. I heard from you that it was, there was an investment interest here. Is there any current design for that side, the, the west side of that street, to be developed by the people who say they have purchased it for an investment?
Oh, no, no. Let me clarify.
And so one of my reasons, I've long been opposed to the way Thane Road developed, but it-
It's a hodgepodge.
It looks like there's a kickback, a kickback, and a kickback along the way, and we've talked about that earlier this evening. That's a logical place for all of that to be commercial in the future. I understand that. That's why I wondered if they had any interest in developing it commercially, or the intention is to keep it residential?
No, the intention is to keep it residential. Had they have an interest in developing it commercially, obviously they wouldn't have a problem with the zone change, because once you-
That was my quick read, but-
Yeah, there you go. Once you bleed, then you tend to just keep bleeding, and pretty quick you get that hodgepodge. And so, no, their intention is residential, their long-term goal is residential, and when they bought the property, all this was zoned residential with respect to that area that we've talked of, with the exception of that area that we've talked about.
They're not planning additional residential development there?
No, no, their intention is to retire. You could be welcome to talk to Mr. Fisher about that, as I understand it, their intention was to, they have it right now rented, and their intention is to retire there.
Thank you. Any other testimony for or against?
I'm Tom Fisher again. I just want to clarify, we did buy the place and intentionally either retiring there or utilizing the place for that type of purpose, or, you know, as a place, or as a rental property. We were just planning on redevelopment the area, or turning it to commercial, anything like that. And I agree with you, we have a really great view of that canyon in some ways down below, and it's kind of, we've kept it that way down in there, and we really don't want to turn it any way into what it is right now. So our intention is not to turn it into a commercial development at all for that piece of property.
Thank you. Any other testimony? Mr. Young, have you got rebuttal?
Go ahead. Got one more map. We haven't worn you out with maps yet. Can you zoom in on that at all? I'm definitely out of my area expertise here. Yeah, a little bit more, yeah, that'll do. Thanks, Joel. Okay, so, the house is right here. 3114 is directly across the street, right there. That's why, right here, where this line is, I have no intention of changing this. That is going to remain a single-family residence. It's going to stay as it is right now. And I, you know, I respect the fact that they're right here across the street, and they live there, and that's where they want to stay. Right here, the 3106 property represented by Mr. Bluit is directly across the street from the budget rental. So the line right here is they are directly across the street from budget rental. Now, no doubt, if something happened right here, both of these people would be impacted, but it's not directly across the street. As I see it right now, under current use, the horse would be the only one affected directly by the use directly across the street, because there's a vacant lot right there that is part of the 3106 property, and Joel's the only one that got my humor on that, but I was trying. This is a vacant lot, it's, and it's a part of this property right here that is actually not occupied by the owners. The way I understand it, they never occupied the property, they bought it and turned it into a rental. So, you know, to say that that's going to ruin the future value of their property because there's a commercial piece across the street, I just, I don't see how that's possible. As far as the children go, you know, I live here, I work here, my wife grew up in Lewiston, we've got four kids that we're raising in this community, you know, I'm sensitive to that. As far as any activation, as far as construction or development goes on the property, the city is going to require me to put in curb, sidewalk, and gutter along this entire street frontage. And according to the standards, it's a four-and-a-half-foot sidewalk with a five-foot landscape strip. So now there's going to be a curb, and then there's going to be almost 10 feet of separation from the street to where their children can now walk along this street without having to walk along the edge of the street or along an unfinished piece of property. So, you know, that is going to be a triggering event for the city if I do go ahead and pull a building permit for something. And as far as the negative comment, you know, I, as a developer, I've done a couple subdivisions in the city of Lewiston, and it's been my experience that the neighbors don't show up in droves to approve whatever you're representing, so, you know, I would expect that they would show up and not want to change it. But this shop right here has been here for years, and until recently, before they brought in the truck and loaded all the garbage on it and hauled it off to recycle the steel, I mean, it's just been unfinished, unlandscaped, with stuff piled all over it. In fact, there's still stuff piled in and around it. So having some kind of an office space that's going to be parallel with the existing house that's there with the curb, sidewalk, and gutter, and as far as future development goes on that, you know, whatever office you put in, there's city standards for stormwater containment and for parking on a unit like that. So, you know, you can't put in a monster building in there, the site is just not big enough to allow for it. In fact, the 1,600-square-foot building that I've kind of penciled out is about the right size to allow for the parking with adequate flow in and out. That's all.
Questions for counsel?
Just one more question for, what's that?
For staff?
For staff?
Well, if you have no more testimony, it's time to close the public hearing and then-
Yep, staff, we can, yeah.
With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, because I do have a couple of questions for staff, myself. So with that, Mr. Plaskin.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. What are the other options at this moment, say, we know that Mr. Young owns the property, what are the other things that he can, what are the things that he can actually do with that piece of property now? With this current zoning?
I don't have with me the current R2A zoning district.
Give me a ballpark, run at it.
Generally speaking, the existing zoning is intended for lower-density residential uses and is primarily intended for and permits single-family residential development. Could contain a duplex, you're allowed one duplex per lot in that zone. You can have a family daycare, which is daycare for six or fewer kids. Most of the uses that could be allowed beyond that are conditional uses that would have to go through a public hearing process.
Thank you.
Mr. Plaskin, there's some mention of high-density residential. That mean it would still have to go through a zone change to go to High Density Residential Act?
That's correct.
Correct. And in your presentation, that was your argument that it would be better suited for high-density residential than C3?
Not necessarily that it would be better suited for that, so much as it is suitable for that. It can, it has the size, the configuration, the topography to accommodate multifamily, but more to the point in my mind is the fact that that would be consistent with how it's designated for future land use on the comprehensive plan map. I think that is a very key issue.
Counselor Cleaver?
Well, and since it is apparently a key issue, if there was such a demand, I mean, I'm going back to the analysis here, and I made a couple of comments, but, you know, if the apartment rentals are so attractive, when's the last time we had a big apartment complex built? It's right over here on Southway, and I just don't see a mad rush for people building 18-unit apartment complexes. So, yeah, maybe it'll change in 15 or 20 years, but the way it is right now, Joel, obviously there's no demand. I mean, you may think that we have low inventory, but if there was the demand, you know, penciled out, people would be building it.
May I respond?
Sure.
I had contact with two people just today, one of which expressed interest in building a 14-unit apartment complex, the other person potentially expressing interest in a 72-unit apartment complex.
Could you explain the ramifications of a contract zone, long-term? I mean, say if you had, this person got this contract zone, and they wanted to sell the property 15 years down the line, can the new buyer change the conditions of the contract?
No, not without additional public hearings to do that. One thing that I didn't mention is that I completely agree with Mr. Bluit, that if you feel the need to modify the C3 zoning district through a contract zone as severely as is suggested by the applicant, I do not believe it is a C3 zone anymore, and I do agree with him that it would be a spot zone. You've got 20 uses that are intended to be allowed by right in the C3 zone. The applicant proposes to take 15 of those uses out and allow only five, one of which I will remind you is retail. And I haven't spoken with him directly about it, but my estimation is that the applicant would also agree to omit the conditional uses that are allowed under the C3 zone. Typically, those are more intensive than even the uses that are permitted by right. Does that be something you'd be suggesting? So that adds even more to the list of uses that could be intended for the C3 zone that you would be saying don't belong here on this property.
Any other questions of Mr. Plaskin?
I've got one for Jamie.
What's that, for Jamie?
I've got one for Jamie.
Okay.
Actually, I'm waiting for that, Joel. What would preclude him from building a house and having his office in his house for his construction business?
The only thing that I'm aware of is depend on the nature of his construction office. If he wanted to conduct business as an office from the house, it would have to be within the confines and the limitations of the home occupation standards.
25%.
25% of the gross floor area of the house is one of those standards.
So on a 17,000 and something square-foot lot?
It's not based on the lot size, it's the house size.
Okay, but he could still build a rather large house on a, what was the square footage? No, no.
The lot size is, each lot is about 1,700 square feet.
17,000.
17,000, yes.
Thank you. So at which point in time he could also just build a triplex on that?
Not by right in the R2A zone, uh-uh. Duplex is the most you can do by right in that zone.
I thought for every 10,000 square feet, you could have a duplex, and it would require for each additional dwelling would be another 7,500?
In the R3 and the R4 zones, yes. In the R2 zone, because once you go beyond a duplex, it qualifies as multifamily residential, that's not allowable in the R2 zone.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I have a list of what's allowed, and maybe you'll help. Outright zones, outright uses that are permitted in the R2A zone are bed and breakfast facilities subject to some special conditions, a church, Class A manufactured home, commercially uses that have already been there, family daycare subject to some special conditions, a manufactured home park with a minimum area of two acres and a maximum density of 8.7 units per acre, mortuary subject to some conditions, a park, a school, single-family dwelling, or two-family dwelling.
So I guess the big question I have is, because Mr. Young has changed things substantially from what was presented at the planning and zoning, I mean, I, your thoughts on, should they be allowed to take a look at what he's amended and proposed, or?
Mr. Mayor remembers the council.
I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, I just, I'm trying to be fair to everybody.
Nothing precludes the council from sending it back to planning and zoning if that's what you want to do, certainly. I guess the question that was raised is, does it, given the amendment, it shrinks the area, it shrinks the notification, I guess the question is, are they going to actually consider anything they didn't consider before? Yeah, probably.
Well, and if he's agreed to restrict the uses that he's proposing on there, I just, I-
If that's what the council wants to do, they certainly do.
I hate sending stuff back, but, you know, in this instance, and we've had, you know, a fair amount of testimony on it, we've been going on for, you know, over an hour, and of course, Mr. Young probably wants to get going with his plans, too. He's got to get a Plan B going, but I don't know if it's appropriate or what the council feels. What's the schedule like at P&amp;Z, Joel?
I don't currently have any applications in hand for hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
What are your thoughts?
since Planning and Zoning Commission would have potentially less impact than it did originally, that it's proper to move it on to council, I believe, and he can speak for himself. But if it were me as the applicant, and I thought going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a modification like this to my application would have yielded a recommendation of approval, I would have chosen to do that rather than go on to the council.
Was he apprised of that?
Like I said, I'll let him speak for himself, but certainly he could have resubmitted an application, and we could have started from the beginning.
Okay.
Mr. Plaskin, don't go away. I got a couple of questions. It's kind of, I guess I've been here long enough to, it kind of reminds me of the early days of when we tried to deal with the rezoning of Brighton Avenue before we did the big corridor study. And I think there's a lot of the same issues here with the landowners. The C3, I know that when, when commercial was early on allowed at Brighton Avenue, that was when the screening requirements between commercial and residential was required with those same screening. Were those screening requirements just for the Brighton Avenue corridor, or are they made the same for all C3, between C3 and residential?
And I wasn't here when that Brighton Avenue special planning area was developed and that zoning created, but my understanding is that it's not the same screening requirement. There is a requirement for there to be screening put into place where someone wants to develop property for commercial purposes and it's adjacent to a residential use, but I believe there's something more specific to Brighton Avenue, but there would still be required to have screening under the C3.
Counselor Cleaver?
Follow-up on that, since that was the first big action I got to vote on with P&amp;Z, and that was a long process. There are actually two separate areas there. You have the special planning area A, which directly fronts Brighton, and then you have the block to the south, I guess would be on, is it airway? Airways included?
Airways included, and then Linden. So there's actually two separate areas, so there were some special screening requirements set up there, because as you get back away from Brighton, of course, you are definitely right on the residential line there, so what they are, I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head.
I know the traffic requirements, when they mentioned high-density residential, the potential of 14 units that could be located on this, depending on three to four trips a day, at 28 trips, because a lot of times they'll count two vehicles per apartment, that could be anywhere from 80 to 112 trips per day for a high-density residential area. And that's where I personally live, fairly close to a large apartment complex, is separated by 8th Street, but you do get a lot of traffic and noise and stuff and that such from that area from time to time.
Mr. Mayor, is that a what-if, I mean, in your argument?
Yeah, I guess that's a what-if argument, because since that was brought up during the presentation, that was one of the possibilities. That I had for concern was the trips per day versus, I think, the traffic study that was given to us was seven.
So to the point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, did Mr. Young know that there was an option to, once he made a modification, that he could take it back to planning and zoning?
I don't know, I'd default to him to answer that question. I don't recall telling him that specifically. Perhaps he was aware of it anyway, or perhaps I told him, and I don't remember, I don't know, I'd default to him.
Could I answer?
Please.
Yeah, I was aware of that option. And the conversation that I had with Joel was if we reduce the impact, it would probably just be all push it through to the council, rather than starting over at planning and zoning, especially in light of the fact that the vote was free to P&amp;Z.
So I think the issue before council tonight is, one option is to uphold the denial from P&amp;Z and staff. The other is overturn the denial and go with the recommendation of what Mr. Young would like to do. Or a third would be an option that council, if you decide to, we could remand it back to planning and zoning with, but if, when you do, I think in deference to them, I think we need to give them some specific issues that we would like them to look at, or what we're thinking about, and why we return it back to planning and zoning, so they can focus in on that.
Mr. Mayor, that was going to be my question to Counselor Cleaver. What kind of information, having had the experience of being on P&amp;Z, what kind of information would you have to have to, or would one want to reconsider something?
Well, I guess if that's the route we want to take, I would strongly recommend that they take a look at the modifications to his plan and take those into consideration. He's taken the time to do a traffic study, what he's proposing to do, things like that probably weren't presented, I'm sure they weren't presented at the time, because he's changed his plan. That being said, you know, if we deny, and he decides to reapply it, and he has to go through the reapplication process and pay the money and all that kind of stuff, if we remand it back, then with some recommendations or guidelines that we'd like them to look at, then it's still an open process. I would be much more in favor of that.
Can I speak?
Certainly.
If I go back to P&amp;Z, I'm going to go for the R4 zone change. I will come in with the support of the staff.
High-density residential.
Correct. I don't know if that has any relevance or not, but.
Well, I would think.
We addressed all the same information when we went through P&amp;Z. Really, there's nothing different. I mean, I told him I was going to use the house as a rental, I told him I was going to put restrictions on uses under the C3, and I lost 32.
And what do we decide the impact of an 18-unit apartment complex would be, Joel? From a traffic standpoint?
I don't believe that's known for sure yet.
I'm sure there's some studies out there that figures out how many trip ends are generated by multifamily.
I'm very sure of that as well. I just don't know exactly what those numbers are right now. I haven't looked at that. That would be a completely different application, that would go through the same type of review and analysis, but based on the considerations specific to a high-density residential development proposal, and it would certainly include documentation or confirmation about the projected traffic generated by the density and the potential number of units that could occur on the property. As I said in my initial staff presentation, it's not that the property at this particular time on that substandard street is necessarily inherently ripe for multifamily residential development at this time, it's simply that that's what it's designated for on the comprehensive plan. And so, just off the top of my head, because it's designated for that on the comprehensive plan, I would be strongly inclined to prioritize that in a staff recommendation for a rezone to R4. Although I'm not sure that it's warranted, just because it's designated that way on the current plan now, because it's still less than an acre, and rezoning just this property in question to R4 could still be viewed as a spot zone, and therefore not justified at this time. I just don't know what the results of that review and public hearing process would be.
Mr. Mayor, there's been a great deal of development in this area since that comprehensive plan, and one of the biggest developments is that this has become a street that is kind of a safety corridor, or an approach corridor, to get oneself onto Thane or get across Thane, using the.
Traffic light.
Using the traffic light. You know, we have kind of an ungodly situation with Thane. It's not safe to get in and out of commercial properties. It did happen in a willy-nilly fashion, and you know, businesses just started happening. Somewhere along the line, it wasn't terribly consistent. Given the fact that this is a much more active street than it was during that comprehensive plan, I don't disagree with the fact that we need to go up as opposed to out. There's a lot of evidence that says we need multifamily housing in the city, or at least that there's interest in it. But if you look at that particular piece of property, that would make me even more nervous, because it dumps people onto that street, it dumps potentially kids onto that street, unless you're building a.
Retirement.
You're building an apartment only for senior citizens, that might be a slightly different issue. But it doesn't seem to me like that's one of the smartest things to do, even though I understand the long-term projection that we need to be going up and not out. Back in the good old days, when, you know, I took my '56 Chevrolet to Jimmy over here and had him fix it, that was a pretty easy way to get to the gas station, you know, it wasn't hard. But that's a much more active street than it was when I last took my budget rental back to him, believe me. It's a place that just has kind of grown in spite of itself, and it kind of has morphed into something other than what it seemed like it was originally intended. I don't think this is going to be an easy answer. I guess I'd be nervous about remanding it back if we already know that it's going to be talked about in another zone, because that essentially says the decision we're making tonight is not the decision we're being asked to make. We make it one way, it's going to force an action to go another direction. So it really isn't, for me, a clear path as to what the intention is here.
I think that it'd be appropriate for council that if we remand it back, that we have some pretty clear definitions of why we're sending it back to planning and zoning, and then if the owner decides to change zoning, it'll be between him and planning and zoning to figure that out. I think that the issue before us today is the proposed zone change to C3 with the possible contract zone changes, and comprehensive plan amendment for that. But anyway, I'm looking for a motion from one of the counselors of what you'd like to do.
Well, given the fact that, you know, Mr. Young's already purchased his property, he's taken a lot of time to put together some information, well, for P&amp;Z, and then because, yeah, it was two, or three to two vote against, but in the meantime, since he's done this other stuff, I mean, what it boils down to people is property changes. And property changes hands, sometimes it changes use. What he's done across the street from my house, the Cherry Tree Lane, that was a horse pasture. Same thing that you people have up right there next to your house. You know, Dr. Harry's owned that for years, you could play golf in that pasture. And what, and it wasn't Mr. Young.
Counselor Cleaver, is there a motion there?
There is a point. Hang on.
We got a motion here, and then we can do a discussion.
What it boils down to, all right, I want to make a motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded for a motion to approve. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Counselor Cleaver.
For us so interrupted. The fact of the matter is, you know, there was nothing I could do about it, and it was actually, was initiated by another gentleman that bought the property, and he came through with this proposal to put in 17 lots, 17 lots, people, on 3.2 acres. That's a lot. That's what I would consider a high-density type of development. It was actually done as a planned unit development, and of course, I couldn't vote because I live within 300 feet of the project. Was I nuts about it? No, but that's the way it goes, I couldn't afford to buy the property to keep my view. But you know what? It hasn't been a problem. It really hasn't. There could have been other things done to that property. And the reason why I made this motion is, if we're going to be talking about traffic, and I understand, I drive up and down 8th Street for the same reasons that have been reiterated here, it's a lot easier to get on Thane by going through the traffic light than it is to try and poke out off of Vista by the coffee shop or the gas station, I I don't see that the traffic impacts, and with the conditions that he has agreed to put on that, I don't think it creates a spot zone. It is commercial on two sides, was involved in the zone change of a residential house into what is now the shoe department of Tri-State, if you will, and a portion of the parking lot. And there are a lot of mad people about that, too, but you know what? It actually hasn't been that big a deal, and it has increased the traffic on Vista, I'll give you that. But they did a very good job of improving the drainage situation in that neighborhood, that was a big concern of the neighbors. Of course, if he goes through with this plan, he's going to have to, you know, accommodate the same thing, it's going to be stormwater retention. But you know, if it was me living across the street, faced with a potential 18-unit apartment complex where you got two cars per unit, let's say, there's 36 cars, people coming and going, it's a way bigger impact on the traffic on that street. And that street is, it's a freeway right now, and it has been for a long time. And even after Walmart left, I haven't really seen a whole lot of reduction in the volume of traffic. And I think I agree with the lady that said the access to Switzer, I mean, there's a lot of people up in Orchard's, it's a much easier way for them to get down there, going through that traffic light to get down there. So that's why I made the motion, so.
Mr. Counselor Cleaver, for clarification, your motion was to approve, did that include the contract?
The contract, what he has agreed to on the uses that he would do.
Yeah, B8, 9.
I'm trying to find the.
11, 13, 14. So it's mini storage, personal services, professional business offices, residential uses, and retail, sales and services. And then they also, if I recall, in Mr. Young's testimony, he was willing to waive the conditional uses. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that part of your amendment?
Sure.
The second, do you agree?
I agree.
With that, okay. Any other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Stevenson.
I appreciate everyone coming and discussing the project, it's obviously been a long time, and a lot of work has gone into it, and my only problem is that I feel conflicted about the fact that the P&amp;Z gave a recommendation based on, from what I understand, what of the conversation, that the P&amp;Z gave a recommendation based on a plan that's been changed since they gave that recommendation, is that correct?
Correct.
And so I feel a little bit uncomfortable about approving it when it's changed from what they disapproved. In other words, I'm, you know, I'm almost tempted to think that remanding it back at this point with the changes and the specifics that Counselor Cleaver talked about would be maybe more appropriate, but I'm open to more, you know, other counselors' opinions here.
Well, and in fact, if I may.
Counselor Cleaver.
We've already heard from the applicant that he wasn't going to go back through that process again. We could remand it.
Correct.
We could remand it, but then he was not going to go through the change of commercial, he was going to go for the R4. And I don't know if there was kind of lukewarm support or not from staff, but regardless of which, I'm looking at it from, you know, the integrity of the neighborhood. My opinion, that is, that's really asking for it, putting 18 units in there.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I'm sensing a degree of neighborhood restlessness about mini storage, more than anything else. If there were two professional buildings in there, or professional uses for doctors' offices, lawyers, realtors, whatever, would we be having the same conversation? That could accommodate that in size, could it not, Joel?
Certainly.
So one of the largest objections is the whole concept of the mini storage, is that something we can exclude if we wish to?
I don't know if I'd be willing to do that, I mean, there's an easy formula for regulation on that, it's called a gate with a lock on it. I'm not able to access, I have a mini storage up at their airport, mini storage, and I'm not always able to access that at any time of night that I'd like to, so I guess I don't. To me, it's not an issue.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
Our code, when it comes to contract zones, if the council votes to approve a contract zone, requires that it be remanded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to come up with the agreement, the actual conditions set in the zone, just so you understand that.
Okay.
So.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Mayor, I couldn't hear?
Yes, that if it's contract zone, which is the motion on the floor right now, that actually, we would have to remand it back to planning and zoning for them to negotiate the terms of the contract zone. So if, my understanding then, Ms. Shropshire, is that if this motion is approved, then with what we'd have is a listing of what has been proposed, and that would be remanded back to planning and zoning to finalize a contract.
Right. The code actually says submit it back to the commission to set limits for the submission of the zoning agreement, and give whatever direction to the commission that the council wishes to give. But it does get remanded back to, because the actual agreement comes before the commission, and is developed by the commission, and then comes back to them.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to one with pro temp can and abstaining for conflict of interest. So the contract zone requirements, I think if you've got clarity of what we have that's been proposed in testimony, will be remanded back to. been proposed in testimony, will be remanded back to Planning and Zoning.
I think Joel will take that back to the commission.
Just a point of order, with that remanding, that's for the comprehensive plan amendment and the zone change. Is that correct? That'll take care of those, so we'll have those two separate issues coming back to us. Is that correct?
The comprehensive plan amendment, the map amendment, is different than the zone change. The zone change is, is the actual contract zone.
Okay.
My understanding is that you have to approve the comprehensive plan amendment in order for the zone change consideration to be valid.
Correct.
And so I would ask that you take a.
Separate motion. Separate vote.
Yes.
Action on the cop plan map tonight, followed by an action on the zone change.
Okay.
This one actually requires two different votes.
Two votes, okay. So really, the first is comprehensive plan amendment. I'll entertain a motion to approve the comprehensive plan amendment as proposed by staff.
It's actually an amendment to the map.
Amendment to the map.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So motion carries five to one with pro temp can and abstaining for conflict of interest. Next item is zone change, 0412. The motion on, would be to accept the terms of a, the proposed zone, contract zone items, and that it be remanded back to Planning and Zoning to finalize a contract zone.
I don't know that you have to actually move to remand it back. That happens by operation of our code, but you'd have to vote on the zone change.
So approval of the zone change as proposed with the contract amendments.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to one with pro temp can and abstaining for conflict of interest. Okay. We'll take a five-minute break.
As long as I get my mouth shut, Joel.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene the regular city council meeting. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there any items the council wishes to pull? Counselor Randall.
We'd like to take C and D and put them in the active agenda, please.
Okay. C and D will be moved to H and I. Any other items, Counselor Daniels?
You mean G and H?
No. No, it'd be H and I.
H and I.
Oh, I have an old one.
You have an old one.
There's a new one right here underneath all this stuff.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to read the consent agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we read the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read the consent agenda as amended. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Approving the minutes of the December 3rd, 2012 work session, accepting the minutes of the November 1st, 2012, and December 6th, 2012, Historic Preservation Commission, approving the purchase of an RV truck from Ques Incorporated of Orlando, Florida, in the amount of $250,000, approving the vouchers payable dated November 22nd, 2012, through December 27th, 2012, in the amount of $2,508,517.36, and December 28th, 2012, through January 3rd, 2013, in the amount of $505,804.62.
Consent agenda has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to the active agenda. First item of business is ordinance 4593 for the possible third reading and adoption. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4593 for the third time by title only, suspending the rules.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we read ordinance 4593 for the third time by title only, suspending the rules. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read ordinance 4593 for the third time by title only, suspending the rules. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4593 by title only, suspending the rules, and ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZC-0312, declaring that certain real property be removed from the low-density residential zone R2A and included in the general commercial zone C4, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston, approving the findings of fact, conclusions of law and decision, and providing an effective date.
Okay. Ordinance 4593 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 4593.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance 4593.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 4593. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need the council to specifically approve the finding facts and conclusions of law? Council could do that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for council to approve the findings of fact and conclusions of law and decision for ordinance 4593.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the decision for ordinance 4593. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4592 by title only, suspending the rules, and ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code, Chapters 10, amending the 2009 edition of the International Building Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel/Gas Code, International Code Council Electrical Code, International Existing Building Code, International Residential Code, International Property Maintenance Code, adopting the 2009 Idaho Plumbing Code, and providing an effective date.
Ordinance 4592 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 4592.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance 4592.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 4592. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4592 by title only, suspending the rules, and ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code, Chapters 10, amending the 2009 edition of the International Building Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel/Gas Code, International Code Council Electrical Code, International Existing Building Code, International Residential Code, International Property Maintenance Code, adopting the 2009 Idaho Plumbing Code, and providing an effective date.
Ordinance 4592 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 4592.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance 4592.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2013-1. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Daniel. Counselor Randall?
Yes, there's two items on the personnel policy. First one is Section 303, selection process. Would like the sexual orientation omitted on the first paragraph. And on Section 515 on overtime policy, fourth paragraph, the last sentence omitted.
Okay. You want to make that in the form of an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. So, proposed amendment to the resolution 2013-1?
I'm unclear on the motion.
Motion to amend resolution 2013-1 to Mr. Randall?
Okay. I make a motion to amend the proposed personnel policy on Section 303, selection process, first paragraph, omit sexual orientation, and then on Section 515, overtime policy, fourth paragraph, last sentence, omit paid absences covered by vacation, sick, compensatory time, paid holidays, and other such paid leave shall be included in hours' work within the work week.
Counselor Dan?
I have a point of clarification on the motion. My understanding was that the sexual orientation was mentioned in Section 102. Is that, am I in?
It's Counselor Randall's amendment here, so.
Is that Section 102 or 303?
It's from when I got off of the internet stuff that we were provided.
Mr. Mayor, you have a lot of language in both sections.
Both sections. Okay.
Okay. Second.
Okay. It's been seconded. Mr. Bennett, I have a question. Received a copy of some past policies from 2005, I think, previous city manager Vassar, regarding personnel policy. Would you like to share that with us, please?
I would, thank you. The current language that's being proposed in the personnel policies is entirely consistent with the past practice of the city and past policies of the city. We have an administrative policy 2005-02, which was approved in 2005, signed by city manager Jan Vassar, which is our anti-harassment policy. And it says, "The city of Lewiston is committed to providing a work environment in which all people are treated with respect and dignity, and strictly prohibits harassment based on all protected classes, including race, religion, age, sex, marital status, national origin, ancestry, disability, and sexual orientation. All employees are expected to help with this effort." So that was eight years ago. This is what we do in practice. So putting this in the updated personnel policy is entirely consistent with actions that the city's been taking for at least the last eight years, and from what my understanding is, from other employees, they're for much longer than that.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Rand?
This anti-harassment policy that was issued April 1st, 2005, by Jan Vassar, was that approved by council?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. Also, is the current policy that we are now changing, or in the process of changing, that was the same policy, or was it a new policy that had been issued after Vassar?
Well, the language that's proposed in the personnel policy update is not in the current personnel policy.
Which is how old? Ten years?
2001, I believe. What typically happens when a personnel policy is adopted is that over time, in order to avoid having to take everything back to the council for a reapproval, every time a change needs to be made, administrative policies are issued by the city manager to address issues that didn't come up during the time when the last update was reviewed. And so those are collected over time, and then they're consolidated into the next update. That's what we've tried to do here as well, is to take a number of these administrative policies and consolidate them with the updated version of the personnel policy that we're looking at tonight.
Counselor Daniel?
I seconded, just for the sake of having the conversation. Though I do support the sexual orientation being removed, I would like it for all the groups to remove. So I'll bring up my conversation after this amendment goes.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment on the floor?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Stevenson?
Could you clarify the amendment? Did Counselor Daniel provide specific wording or generic wording? I couldn't hear him.
Counselor Randall provided, asked that the wording for sexual orientation be removed from Section...
Yeah, removed. Section 303, selection process.
And also, was there two sections that we'd believe?
The one that's on the overtime.
Oh, on the overtime?
And then what was the third one?
The overtime was Section 515 overtime policy, Paragraph 4. And it was concerning the paid absences covered by vacation, sick, paid vacation, sick leaves, compensatory time, paid holidays, and other paid leave shall be included in hours' work within a work week. And I wanted that omitted. Okay?
Well, I have a question, and just as a point of clarification, because there were multiple versions of the handbook online, and I want to make sure I was looking at the right one. Has the stipulation about living in Lewiston still been removed? Is that part of this addition?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I have a problem with that. For decades, that requirement that people, city employees, live in Lewiston has been in there, and it's been ignored. So obviously, we can't do anything about the people who are currently employed. But I think that's an important statement. Even Moscow requires that of their employees. And it makes that our employees have some skin in the game for their town, and also that if they are...
Point of order. Counselor Stevenson, that's not part of the amendment? Is this amendment to the amendment, or...
We're just voting now on the amendment, not on the original?
Right.
We're not voting yet.
We're still discussing the amendment that Counselor Randall has...
Okay, well then, let me comment on the wording on that amendment for Counselor Randall. And I was thinking about this for the past couple of days, and it occurs to me that a lot of the objection that some people may have about the wording of this particular area, the first one, is because a lot of people were not born when a lot of these job discrimination issues came up. And I wanted to list, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 items. All of them cover this kind of issue, and for us to be putting those kinds of words in there is unnecessary. It starts with Title VII Civil Rights Act of 1964, and that bases race, color, religion, sex, national origin, and it prohibits employment discrimination on those. The Equal Pay Act of 1963, Age Discrimination Act of 1967, Title 1 and 5 of the American Disabilities Act in 1990, Sections 501 and 505 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Title 2 of the Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act of 2008, and the Civil Rights Act of 1991. All these things uncover this issue in a simple way and in a very detailed way, as far as how federal, state, and local entities need to deal with it. And I think we leave ourselves open for problems by making up our own definitions and singling out a certain slice of people. They're covered in, especially with the Civil Rights Act of 1964, was huge. And I think it's wrong of us to start injecting our own wording in there. So I don't support the amendment, although I support the concept. I understand what Counselor Randall is looking for.
Counselor Dan?
So did I stick to the right topic on that one?
Yes, you did. Counselor Daniel?
So, you know, there is a lot of things in Counselor Randall's amendments, such as the overtime issue, that I do support. Therefore, I move that we divide the question and consider each item in his amendment separately.
I'd second that.
So, Mr. Randall, I guess we could divide the question and have two separate amendments?
I don't have an issue with that at all.
Okay. Mr., Counselor Daniel, where you seconded the first amendment, we'll split the second. As in agreement with that, we'll submit the two. Okay. So the first item, question, amendment, question is regarding the language of sexual Section, would you give those two sections to me again?
303 for selection process, which will omit the sexual orientation, and Section 515 overtime policy.
Okay, 303. No, we're just doing the sexual orientation first, Counselor Randall.
It's Section 102.
102. Okay. I knew there was two places.
And Counselor Randall, his amendment is that that be removed?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Any additional talk that was added in?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the amendment before council now is just regarding Section 102 and 303.
303.
For regarding sexual orientation. Is there any further discussion from council? Counselor Daniel?
I was actually going to save this for my own motion, but I understand if this fails, it won't be proper for me to bring it up afterwards, so I'm just going to go ahead and go with it now. "The intent of protected classes is to protect certain groups from unjust discrimination. However, it always excludes the smallest minority, which is known as the individual. As government, our primary focus should always be to preserve individual liberty and not give special protections to some while ignoring others." And, you know, I, there's a quote by Supreme Court Justice Clarence Thomas that I think we should all think about. "I don't believe in quotas. America was founded on a philosophy of individual rights, not group rights."
Any other discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify a couple of things, issues that are... First of all, this is not an affirmative action issue. This is not a quota issue. This is simply an anti-discrimination issue. And secondly, there are a number of statutes that were read by Counselor Stevenson, and appreciate her research into those. Those do not include the language protecting sexual orientation. Federal law right now does not do that. However, there is a Supreme Court case that does so in Colorado, a case out of Colorado in 1996, where an actual federal statute was not, the issue of a federal statute was not raised. But the issue of whether or not you could protect a class of people defined by sexual orientation was because of a statewide referendum that was passed in Colorado that was in conflict with a number of municipal ordinances that were adopted protecting sexual orientation. And the Supreme Court said you can do it. So the city can, in fact, put into effect protections broader than what are listed in individual federal statutes, according to the Supreme Court.
Counselor Daniel?
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
If I were to make motions, we're currently discussing, for instance, Section 102, could I make an amendment to it? Like currently, his motion is to get rid of sexual orientation, and that's what we're discussing right now. Would I be able to make an amendment to that?
To the amendment?
Yes.
You can make amendment to his amendment, yes.
Okay.
And that, as long as it refers to Section 102 and 303.
All right.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you. All right. I move that we replace Section 102, Item 1, with recruit, hire, train, and promote individuals in all job titles based on their eligibility, their work history, experience, ability, and overall qualifications for the desired position while complying with any and all applicable state and federal laws as they pertain to recruiting, hiring, training, and promoting. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the amendment regarding Section... And so that's just to replace Section 102, or 303 also?
303 with consistent language. I missed 303 in my paperwork, so.
And point of clarification, this suggested language then would remove all of the identification of all of the protected classes that are currently listed in those two sections. Is that correct?
Yes, it would, but we'd also still be following all, as my motion states, it'd still be following all applicable state and federal laws. So that'd still be in there. These wouldn't all be mentioned.
Any further discussion by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Stevenson?
Okay, so we're now poised to vote on Counselor Daniel's amendment to Counselor Randall's amendment?
We're discussing it.
Yes, right.
We're not voting yet, but we're, yeah, but we're discussing. So you have a discussion point to the amendment by Counselor Daniel?
I could live with that. He obviously put a lot of effort into coming up with the words without adding new definitions to the federal, state, and local statutes and laws already.
I think one of the things that was interesting to me is that we've had the personnel policy amendment since 2005 on there with that language in the harassment policy. I think that's what was pointed out earlier this evening, that this city is, was made by immigrants and folks moving in, and not necessarily fitting in, but making their fit in the community, and form in the community, regardless of where they came from, or who they were, or what economic background. And I think that we still come from that stock, and we exemplify that. Whether we say that in words, I think that unless you follow them up with deeds and in your actions, they're just going to be followed. And that's probably the sad part of it, is that a lot of times, folks put those words out there to say this is what we are, but they fail to follow up with action. But in doing some research and looking into this, I think that's something that I think the city has walked the walk on what we're saying. And so I think that staff has done a good job of putting the personnel policy together in regards to the language proposed. That's my only real concern, is that we are following federal guidelines in my dealings with the feds. It's one thing to broadly state something, but a lot of times, they want you to verbatim repeat what they have in their language, which goes into protected classes. But that being said, I completely understand, Counselor Daniel, where you're coming from on trying to define groups, because I sympathize with that point of view.
Mr. Mayor?
Pro Tim Cannon.
And I also, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, Counselor Daniel, and I applaud you for that. I, you know, if everyone do the same thing that you're talking about, too, we wouldn't have a problem. But you know, until we solve the problem of discrimination in this country, we're always going to have to create spatial classes. You know, it's just something that is done. Counselor Stevenson just ripped off a whole bunch of law there because of those things, the Civil Rights Acts and those type of things that have taken place. And that's too bad. It really is. But that's what history has done. And that's what, when you start discriminating against people, that's why you have, that's why we have to do the things we do. This hits close to home a little bit. I do have a family member that is of the gay community. He is a very bright, very intelligent, very upstanding citizen, and he does a lot of good things for his community. It's too bad that we have to put things like this in our laws or in our personnel policies, but I'd hire him on the spot. I don't care about stuff like that, just like you said. I care about what the qualifications are, what they bring to the table as far as my company's concerned, and how they can make me profitable, how to make your company profitable. But it's too bad that we have to do things like this. But, and whoever said it, it is the right thing to do, to have this in our personnel policy. It's not the wrong thing. I totally disagree with Mr. Estes's comments. People do not die of AIDS because they're gay. There's all kinds of things why they die of AIDS. Dirty needles, drugs, the list goes on. It's not just gay people or lesbian people, but why they die of AIDS. So that was a totally wrong statement on his part, and I totally disagree with everything he said. We have great people who are of that sexual orientation, who are in all phases of our industry, doctors, lawyers, all of it. I mean, they're all around, and that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. But still, I think it's something that we have to have, because we can't get past those individuals who do discriminate. And where that is 15, 20 years down the road, we're no longer on this council. How's that going to come into play somewhere down the road? It's just, it's too bad. It really is too bad.
Counselor Daniel?
I agree with some of that, but that's the point of what I'm trying to change, is my language looks at everybody as an individual, and look at your relative as an individual, not as a member of the gay community or the straight community. It looks, it look at him as John Smith. I mean, that would be the person, you know, it's, you... To me, liberty starts and ends with the individual, not the group.
Well, I agree, but unfortunately, our society is not that way.
Mr. Mayor? Any other discussion? Counsel Arman?
I've stayed quiet. When I get angry, I get very quiet.
I've stayed quiet. When I get angry, I get very quiet. I run around the country and work on accreditation in colleges all over for an organization that was formerly called NCAP, now CAPE. It's the only accrediting body for teachers that is recognized by the U.S. government federally. The fourth standard in what we require of every single university that's accredited, and I might add that all universities in Idaho, with the exception of one, are accredited, both public and private, by this organization, require that specific training be given to future teachers and to current teachers on how to deal with people who fit into all of these different classifications that have historically suffered some degree of discrimination. Recognizing that what Counselor Daniel says is not incorrect, there are other points of discrimination. I would not want to go someplace, even with degrees hanging out my ears, overweight, and 65 years old, trying to get a job, because there would be asses out there who would put that first before they would assess my brain. And I can guarantee you, there's not one thing wrong with my brain. Although, I assume that there are people who would disagree with that in this audience, and I could name who they are. But I find it offensive for us not to do what we say we're doing and do it well. And I also find it very exciting that this city has a good history of respecting individual rights. It also translates into group rights. And I'm going to oppose the amendment.
I think that one of the things in discussions with City Attorney Shobshire is, in our discussion was that historically, the city of Lewiston has been a leader. I mean, I think if we could have been a mouse in a corner back when they were discussing if they're going to let women run for school board, let alone vote, that the discussions were along this same line. And actually allowed women to run and vote before the suffrage movement. So, again, like I said, I think historically, this community has always tended to do the right thing. And so, anyway, any further discussion by counsel? Pro Tim Cannon.
Mr. Shobshire, you heard the paragraph that Counselor Daniel read. What kind of ramifications would we have if we were to adopt something like that? I don't know, you probably haven't a chance to look at it or anything. You just heard it, but...
As I indicated, this is not a suggestion that this somehow is an affirmative action proposal in our personnel policies. What we're merely stating, and we are in fact parroting what is required by federal law in, to some extent, other than the addition of sexual orientation, those classes that we will not discriminate against. So, somewhere, either in our anti-harassment policy or somewhere else, we really have to state what the federal law requires us to do. We don't discriminate against these sets of classes. But this is not, this isn't setting quotas for anything. This isn't saying we have to hire one person over another. It simply says, we put the people with a different sexual orientation on an equal basis with everybody else we consider for a job. And there isn't any requirement that you hire somebody who's not qualified for the job, ever. And that's not what these particular two sections are trying to do. Simply say, "We're not going to discriminate against you because you're either over 50, a female, gay, of a different race, a different creed, a different national origin." It simply puts that people on the same footing as everybody else.
Counselor Daniel?
And that's exactly what my language does. It looks at everybody as an individual from here until somebody decides they want to be, they, from now until somebody wants to put people back in groups, it recognizes any future group to come, whether it's physical appearance, or political beliefs, or dietary habits. I mean, there's probably some people that get discriminated against because they're vegans. So, I mean, this would cover everybody from here until whenever. And that's the point of my language, is it recognizes people as an individual. That's the basic framework of what makes America America, is individualism, not what group you belong to.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Stevenson?
We're obligated to abide by the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which specifically says that it prohibits employment discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. Now, why do we need to add anything more specific about sex when it's already included? Have we been violating the Civil Rights Act?
We'd be sued if we were.
You bet. Heavy. And to me, it is right there in black and white, and it doesn't need lots of things hanging off of it. But there were technicalities and enhancements of the other things that I named over the years that got more specific and more into age discrimination and that kind of thing. But the sexual orientation part is right there in the Civil Rights Act, Title VII.
No, it's not. I'm sorry.
Does it actually say that, Counselor?
Yes.
What is sex? It just says sex. It's mainly designated between male and female.
Well, you know, if you start trying to define sex, it gets a little crazy. It says, "Race, color, religion, sex, or national origin."
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
And if we've been violating the Civil Rights Act of 1964 by not paying attention to that phrase, then we've got problems. I don't see why we need to be going and adding stuff back in when we should have been already complying with this, and I assume we are.
City Attorney Shobshire?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In those cases that have been brought alleging violations of Title VII, employment discrimination, where the actual discrimination was sexual orientation discrimination, the Supreme Court has simply said, "We're not the legislature. We're not Congress. If you want to protect people of sexual orientation, you need to put it in your law." It doesn't, they will not allow somebody to mask a sexual orientation discrimination issue behind a sex discrimination or gender discrimination issue. So, that's why many, many states have adopted their own, many municipalities have adopted their own prohibitions against discrimination based on sexual orientation, because the Supreme Court simply says, "We're not Congress. We're not going to write your legislation for you." And unless it says it in that, in Title VII, we're not going to enforce a sexual orientation lawsuit. So...
Well, the Title VII gets very specific, because then it goes on to talk about sexual harassment, and it defines gender, same-sex harassment, hostile environment, based on race, color, national origin, religion, age, and disability, and then it goes on pregnancy discrimination. That's a lot of different things already in there. And I think maybe a lot of people don't understand, because they weren't born, and, you know, adults in 1964. So, they're not really knowing that we have these provisions already.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Yes, Counselor Daniel?
I guess I have a question to staff. Why wasn't things like physical appearance added in?
It's not a traditionally protected class. It's not one that's considered a protected class under any other statutes or any other state laws or any Supreme Court cases.
But I'd argue, if I were to adopt the group mentality, I would argue that wouldn't that be the right thing to do, to protect somebody based on how they look, so that a person who was deemed unattractive by society could still find a job?
You could certainly make an amendment to add that to the personnel policies if you'd like, or to our anti-harassment policies. The city can adopt things that are more restrictive than the federal government, as long as we adopt what the federal government has asked us to do for Title VII and Title VI.
Counselor Cannon?
I guess my point is that staff is on record in the Lewiston Tribune, saying that it was the right thing to do to add it in. I'm just curious, if that's the right thing to do, add sexual orientation in, why don't we add physical appearance, political beliefs, dietary lifestyle, gun ownership or lack thereof? I mean, there's so many groups that you could categorize people in, that people can and probably do, at some points in society, get discriminated against. Why not just list them all? You know, why don't we spend the next three hours here, listing every possible group we can currently think of? Or, we just do something simple and look at everybody as an individual. And then, you know, we add in the, "While complying with all state and federal laws." I mean, there you go. I don't understand the pushback from it.
Call for the question?
Question's been called. Vote for the amendment to the amendment. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, the amendment or the amendment to the amendment?
Amendment to the amendment.
Okay. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Nay?
A quick procedural point. Call the question was a motion. They needed a second. They didn't have a second yet. Just to be clear, I, it's not going to change the result, but I didn't want this to come back later, and...
Okay. Question's been called for. Those in favor calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or, no, there's a second. Do we have a second?
All seconded.
Second to the question. Okay. Those in favor calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay. No, I'm sorry.
Motion carries six one to call the question. So, now, we vote on the amendment to the amendment as proposed by Counselor Daniel.
Oh, now we're going to vote again on the amendment to the amendment?
Since we called, we kind of got out of step on our procedure, we'll back up and have another run in it here. So, now, we're voting on the amendment to the amendment that's on the floor. Those in favor of the amendment as proposed by Counselor Daniel, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Irony. Vote is three to four. The amendment to the amendment fails. Now, we have the amendment on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the amendment on the floor?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, and that is, is this amendment that we're talking about now, the singled-out one on the discrimination, this isn't the one about the overtime and the time, right?
That is correct. It's Section 102 and 303.
And then, does Counselor Randall remember how we were, oh, it was just to omit?
Omit?
Omit. Sexual orientation.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Daniel?
I will be, even though I will be voting to remove a group, I will be voting no, just because it goes against everything I just said about looking at people as individuals. But when we get back to the original personnel policy, I'll be voting no, if all the groups are still in there, especially with sexual orientation listed.
Any other further discussion? Those in favor of the amendment to strike the language of sexual orientation from Section 102 and 303, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion, amendment to, the motion to amend fails, two to five. So, we have another amendment on the floor. Is, to refresh my memory, Counselor Randall?
Overtime policy.
Overtime policy.
Section 515.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, a question. Do we vote on the original motion?
No. No, he just had a motion to amend. Neither amendment, motion to amend, has passed, except we split the question at request of Counselor Daniel. So, now, we're looking at the amendment regarding the overtime policy. Is there a second for it?
Yeah, yeah, there was.
Yeah, we had already voted to split the question. Counselor Daniel?
In an effort to save time, if Counselor Randall would be accepting to it, since it is his motion, could we add, I would like to look at the possibility of adding Section 515, overtime on Sundays is considered double time. I'd like to strike that.
Okay.
If he's open to it.
I have a point of clarification. The...
I withdraw, actually. Sorry.
Okay.
I'll wait.
The amendments we're making to the overtime policy would affect, just, the personnel policy does not have precedence over our negotiated union contracts.
Correct. It does not apply to any employee that's covered by a collective bargaining agreement. It does not apply to management personnel, because they do not receive overtime.
So, the amendment to strike the language on overtime would be to non-represented hourly people only?
Correct.
And who would that be in city staff?
Oh, it would be most of the community development staff, the administrative staff at City Hall, and a few other employees at the library, for example. It probably covers about 25% of the employees.
Okay.
Most of our administrative staff.
Counselor Daniel?
Could we go over that? Could I ask Counselor Randall to state his opposition to it, so people know what exactly we're talking about, other than just Section 515?
First off, first off, by, let me reread that portion. I'm going to want to admit it. Paid absences covered by vacation, sick, compensatory time, paid holidays, and other such paid leaves shall be included in the hours worked within a work week. In other words, we're giving credit for, we're giving credit for figuring overtime on hours that are actually non-work hours, which the federal Fair Labor Standards Act only requires for hours worked, not for any hours not worked. And so, we're going above and beyond that. Now, the other thing I got thinking about on that was, by giving that overtime on that, we're also increasing their salary in general, and we're probably also having to pay extra on our percy because of that. So, we're adding another, two expenses. We're paying for time not worked, and we're paying extra on the percy. So, that's why I'm against paying for non-work time, such as vacation, sick, compensatory time, and paid holidays, and other paid leaves.
To be included, so, your amendment, Counselor Randall, if I understand it correctly, is if someone out of five, eight-hour days takes two days of vacation and a day of sick leave, and then he works the last two days at 10 hours a day, the language currently now says that he'd be paid overtime for the four hours.
That's correct.
That's correct. And with your amendment, what would happen is, they would be paid just straight time for the 10 hours worked, but also get paid for the sick leave and the vacation time that they took.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor. This is, the language is currently in the personnel policies. This is not being proposed as part of this personnel policy update. It's already in the personnel policies, and has been in the personnel policies for a very long time.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Counsel Arman?
Do we have any record of abuse?
Who would abuse it? They get a good deal.
No, I was...
It would be our record, Counselor Stevenson.
I'm not aware of any record of abuse or any disciplinary actions that involve that, no.
Counselor Daniel?
What's the, what's the purpose of having it? Was it just miswrote and most, what's...
It's, it's a historical reason. It has been included in a number of specific professions, like the firefighting profession, for a long time. You'll find it in many collective bargaining agreements. I can't give you a specific reason as to why it was originally written that way.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Randall?
I can tell you right now, from my experience in private industry out at Potlatch, if you propose that, the Vice President of Industrial Relations and say, "Stick it. I'm not going to do it. No way. You're going to have to do the time and a half after 40 hours. That's it."
Counselor Daniel? Counselor Daniel?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Stevenson?
How does that compare with the union employee arrangements for similar...
It doesn't affect it at all. It stays as it is, which is...
No, I realize it doesn't affect it. I may have misstated. It's getting kind of late for me. How does that compare, is what I thought was saying.
It's in their contracts now.
The union people have that same arrangement?
Correct.
All of them?
All of them.
We have a couple of different types of unions.
Yes, all of them. Yes, they all do.
Mr. Mayor, that was one of the reasons I objected and voted against the fire department contract that was recently voted on, was the same phrase. I didn't think it was fair to have that in there.
Counselor Daniel?
I understand this is only going to affect a small portion of the city, but you've got to start somewhere. That doesn't make sense, that you can get overtime for sick leave. I mean, it just doesn't, you don't see that anywhere, at least all the places I've worked at. That'd be unheard of. It just doesn't happen.
Mr. Mayor, I understand the idea that you have to start somewhere, but the idea that that language can be negotiated out of any existing collective bargaining agreement is highly unlikely. So, basically, you know, what you're saying is, you're willing to leave it there and have it affect just that one segment of the city employee population.
Counselor Daniel?
With all due respect, you just increased the likelihood of it not being, with that language being removed from collective bargaining agreements by you saying that, while it's very unlikely it's going to be removed, I doubt, when we go into renegotiation, that they're even going to blink an eye when that's even suggested. I mean, we have to start somewhere. If it's not the right thing to do, it's not the right thing to do. It doesn't matter how hard it's going to be to get to that point. We should at least start where we can.
Counselor Kleber?
Well, I've got to agree with Counselors Daniel and Randall. I have a little longer in the tooth than Counsel Randall, but I have been working since I was 14, and I've worked union jobs at grocery stores and non-union shops, and I've never seen anything like this. Maybe it's, apparently it's an accepted practice, but I don't get how you could have three days of vacation at the beginning of the week and then be forced into extra hours and be paid overtime. To me, it's just flies in the face of reason.
That's why, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that's why I asked my question, if there were abuses of that, that had ever been. Do people use this frequently? This as a way of augmenting the salary, et cetera?
I can't say that it is, no. But let me just add that my objection is not to do with the idea of removing the language. As the manager for the city, you know, I have my concerns about that policy as well. My concerns have to do with singling out one small segment of the city employees to bear the burden of that. That too often happens typically in a situation in a city where you have a union block of employees and a non-represented block of employees, and almost inevitably, whenever there's anything that happens for the union, it's the non-represented employees that get the dirty end of the stick.
Pro Tim Cannon?
I agree with that. Singing out one is not the right thing to do, but my question is, does overtime have to be approved?
Overtime has to be approved.
By supervisor or whoever.
Correct.
So, it's not automatic that somebody's going to get overtime. I mean, they would look at different areas or different individuals to maybe try to curtail that overtime, as far as a budget factor, for one thing, but to try to control that and not get that out of hand, right?
Yeah, overtime is always looked at by supervisor. It has to be pre-approved by the supervisor in order to take overtime.
So, there is, so there is avenues to where that's just not going to automatically come into play. It may be there for reasons obvious because of the bargaining units, but it has to be approved, you know? That supervisor has to justify why that guy's going to go out on a truck or go do whatever he's got to do by that supervisor. So, you know, there are things in place to control that. I think we're maybe thinking that just everybody's going to go out and get all this free overtime because they took a week's vacation and somebody got called in on a Saturday. I don't, I think there's avenues placed to control that.
Counselor Daniel?
Okay, okay. So, I guess I take issue with the whole idea of singling out one group, because what will happen if we don't do it for this group, then when we go up for renegotiations with the next, on the next union contract, they're going to say, wait, why are you singling us out then? It's a constant cycle of, oh, well, they have it, we should have it. And if you don't start from, if you don't start at one point, you'll never get to where you want to be. It just won't happen because the other people will, or the other unions will constantly say, oh, well, that union gets it, we should too. Or the non-union people get it, we should too. That's how it'll work.
Counselor Stevenson?
I don't agree with Counselor Cannon, with all due respect. I think that if it's in the manual like that, people have a right to be able to point to it and say, it says right here. And if the supervisor tries to say, well, no, I'm not going to authorize that, I think then we would have trouble. And I think that this is a classic example of why policy is hard, in that there has become, there are these kinds of things that are, maybe need correction, and you correct it in one place, and then it pushes in another, so that if we correct it here, then the unions, one could argue that the union contract, the bargaining contract, has a better deal for those people. But I agree with Counselor Daniel, that we need to start somewhere. And it's very unusual to have that type of arrangement, where you could have potentially vacation or sick days for which you're getting paid, and then have overtime on two days, say, of work, when the other days were not work.
Pro Tim Cannon?
Counselor Stevenson, I authorize all overtime in my store, and an employee does not argue with me about overtime in my store, nor would an employee argue with overtime to his supervisor. I don't think that's grounds for a lawsuit or anything else, if the supervisor decides not to have that individual go on an overtime project. So, I disagree with you wholeheartedly on that. I don't understand your reasoning why we would have a problem with that. The supervisor's there for a reason. The city manager's there for a reason. I mean, it's just not automatic that he's going to get overtime. So, I think from a management standpoint, your statement is not well-received with me, and, but that's why you have supervisors. But an employee is not going to argue with me about whether he's going to get overtime or not.
Mr. Mayor?
He would not, he would not be in my organization if that would be the case.
Counselor Stevenson?
Well, except Counselor Cannon, if it's written specifically in the manual, like this wording is, the supervisor has to implement that.
It's still at his discretion, Counselor.
Well, it doesn't say that in this wording that we're proposing, right? Doesn't say discretion.
I think that one of the big things we have is budgetary constraints, and every department head has an apartment budget for material and equipment and labor, and overtime is a big part of it. I know that we see a line in overtime in public works and in the fire and police. And so, I think that, again, I think it goes to that the department heads have to manage that budget accordingly, and they try to plan their activities to minimize your overtime. I understand the concern for being paid overtime for hours not worked. I think that's more than fair to make sure we have that on the list, so that when we have the next contract opener, I think that's something that we ought to have a conversation with the union representation about, because I don't know how much, it'd take an analysis to see if it saves us any money. I think that, again, as Pro Tim Cannon has pointed out, that the department heads and the managers have an eye on their budget, but also eye on their work, and I think that they're going to use folks that are currently there, working for overtime, rather than call someone off for vacation or that has been ill to come in. But, this is kind of an interesting concept. Counselor Ortman?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with several things. One, it is a discussion for future negotiations. It's always there. It's always a possibility, and I'm sure that one of the reasons it ended up there was that was a trade-off for something historically. But I still, on the other hand, I think that Counselor Cannon probably has the wisest argument. We have staff we hopefully can trust to protect their budgets, and I don't know, I've been liaison to the library, I've worked on the cemetery board, I know that Lynn Moss certainly would protect his overtime, and I'm guessing that, I'm not there currently with Tim, but I'm guessing that he wouldn't be writing any overtime into his budget if he could find any way around it. I know that the police chief doesn't do that. I know that the fire chief doesn't look for any kind of automatic overtime. You're doing everything to protect the budget. You don't want to, they don't want to come back to us and say, we have X number of hours of overtime, not even if they're trying to prove to us they need more staff. You know, I don't even think that they're going to play that game. They'll come to us and say they need more staff. I think they've got more courage than that. I just don't see the people with whom I've worked over the last seven years being the kind of people who would automatically do that as a first choice. I think their first choice is going to be to reconfigure their schedule in any way to get the job done, but that doesn't preclude the kinds of things that could happen, you know? We're going to have snow days and some overtime here, maybe, you know, with our whole half an inch of snow or whatever. You know, Iowa, they'd be laughing at us, but, you know, I just, there are situations where there is overtime. There's, you know, we have a, if we happen to have a stormwater issue, we're going to have some overtime, but those are granted hours very, very judiciously. I've never seen anybody want to come to us and say, gee, I had fun this month approving lots of overtime. That's ludicrous.
Counselor Daniel?
We're not talking about not paying people their overtime. We're talking about actually making them work those overtime hours. There's a big difference. This isn't, this isn't an attack on the employees. We pay them well, we give them great benefits, and we're just requiring them, in order to get their overtime pay, they actually have to work that overtime. It's a very interesting concept that everybody in the private sector has to live by. In order to get overtime, you actually have to work it. And I just don't understand, I trust the staff as well, and you just talked about how you trust staff, but you haven't talked about how you could justify paying somebody overtime if 50 percent of it was vacation pay.
Counselor Randall?
Call the question.
Question's been called for. It's been seconded. Those in favor calling a question, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, so, voting on the amendment for section, Counselor Randall?
515.
515.
Overtime.
Overtime.
Is it just that one section this time?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So, those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion to amend carries five to two. Okay, we have now before us approving the personnel policy for employees of the city of Lewiston, approve as amended.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Daniel?
Sorry if this is going to take a little bit longer, but I take issue with section 902, paid holidays. I don't, I understand we have certain holidays, we pay our employees for it. Makes sense to me. But the day after Thanksgiving is not a holiday. It's a shopping day. It's Black Friday. It's a holiday for retailers, but it's not a holiday. If we're going to have an extra day, for the sake of having an extra day, why don't we actually have it on a holiday for our employees to observe? For instance, January 15th, which I've just learned tonight, that has a pretty historical interest for Lewiston. But the day after Thanksgiving is not a holiday, and I realize I should have made a motion before I discussed, so I move that we strike the day after Thanksgiving from section 902, paid holidays.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend to strike the Friday after Thanksgiving from the paid holidays. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Stevenson?
If we specifically take that named day, Counselor Daniel, is the possibility you would phrase it so that a floating day, which is pretty common, be added or substituted, whatever you want to call it?
Counselor Daniel?
Counselor Stevenson, there actually already is a floating day as well.
There already is a floating day?
Yes, there is. Currently, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Currently, right now, according to section 902, paid holidays, the days are New Year's Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and one day of the employees' choice, and any other holiday declared as a paid holiday by the governor of the state of Idaho.
Pro Tim Cannon?
Get Mr. Kleber first.
Counselor Kleber?
See, that's one holiday we actually get off at home. The day after Thanksgiving, always have.
And you're grateful for it, right?
And it is classified as a floating holiday. So, we get two floating holidays a year. That's one of them that's typically been used, and however it fits in with, say, extending out a Fourth of July weekend, you know, Fourth of July's on a, you know, Thursday, we might get Thursday and Friday off. So, that's kind of the discretion of the employer, but yeah, I don't have a problem with what it's named as such.
Pro Tim Cannon?
Was there a reason that I thought I heard of why they get the day after Thanksgiving off? Was it because they don't take Columbus Day, or was it because they didn't take a day?
No.
Did I not hear that correctly?
No.
Martin Luther King Day.
No, that had to do with Columbus Day.
Columbus Day.
Okay.
However, Columbus Day is a state holiday also, so...
But isn't there one day that the employees don't take, so they can take another day? Did I not hear that right somewhere?
We do not take Martin Luther King.
You did not take Martin Luther King holiday off.
We did not take that right.
So, then is that classified as after Thanksgiving, that holiday? It's not? Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, not specifically, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
But my point is, is that these are supposed to be paid holidays, things that, you know, as a nation, or as a state, or as a community, we recognize as important days. The day after Thanksgiving is important to retailers and retailers alone. It's not an actual holiday. It makes no sense to have it in there. Now, if we want to give a lot of our employees off, or if they want to be able to use their vacation pay, which we're extremely lenient with, then, okay. But it's not, it shouldn't be a paid holiday, because it's not even a holiday. What are they, when they're at home, because in theory, when they observe these holidays, they're supposed to kind of reflect on the holiday, why it's important, what are they reflecting on? What is so important about the day after Thanksgiving that they need that day off?
Leftovers.
To me, it just doesn't make sense. Okay.
Digestion.
But...
You're shopping for bigger pants. Mr. Mayor, I think this discussion's absurd, but that's okay.
All it turns out to be is us granting mostly, or a lot of the employees, except for the police and the fire department, is we just grant them a four-day weekend. Really, really, that's all it's about, is because now they get Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It has nothing to do with the day after Thanksgiving being special at all. It's all about giving a four-day vacation, at least from my perspective. To me, it just doesn't make sense. That's why I made the motion, and that's why I support it.
Personally, I won't support the motion. I think that a lot of times for diseven business, I don't, Counselor Daniel works for a retailer that probably appreciates the traffic that comes through the store on that Friday. Also, I think it's something that, how folks decide to spend and commemorate the holiday and celebrate the holiday is up to them individually. So, for myself, I won't be in support of the amendment.
Call for the question?
Question's been called for. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The motion...
Oh, that's, sorry, this was, we're voting on the question.
Yeah, we're voting on the question. Yeah, we're voting on the question. Now, we're going to vote on modifying the amendment.
I vote aye, I'm calling for the question.
Okay. Amendment to remove the holiday, the day after Thanksgiving, off the holiday list. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Aye.
Nay.
Nay. All right. The motion, the amendment fails, three to four. The motion before the... Counselor Daniel.
Okay. So, my next sec, my next section, and it's my last one, is section 515. It's in regards to overtime, but not the same issue that Counselor Randall brought up. Overtime on Sundays is considered double time. That doesn't make any sense to me. I move that we strike mentioning, mentions of Sunday, of overtime on Sundays being paid as double time versus... Does that make sense?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend section 515, striking term double time and just paid time and a half. That's what you're... Okay? Any discussion? Pro Tim Cannon.
Mr. Bennett, the reasoning behind that?
I'm not aware of the reasoning here at the City of Lewiston as to why that came about. It is a practice that's followed in some communities and in some private businesses, but I don't know the origin of it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes. City Attorney Schruckler.
Not to just mess with the wording on your amendment, but if, in fact, it's going to pass, the easiest way to do it is simply to remove Sundays from the section that has double time, if that's amenable to the council. That's, that's the clearest way, if it passes, to do it.
Okay. I'm going to maintain the amendment. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Second, is that acceptable? Okay. So, it'd be striking Sundays, double time, Sundays.
From the double time.
Counselor Daniel.
And it kind of goes back to the previous, you know, the overtime issue. If it's just, if they work overtime, they should just get paid overtime hours, time and a half. There's no, there's no rationale that I can think of to pay somebody double time just because it's on Sunday. I, it just doesn't make sense, so...
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the amendment to strike Sundays double time from section 515. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero for the amendment. Okay, we are back to the...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Stevenson.
I'll be on the procedure, because we've wandered a lot, but I would like to amend the motion and include residency of City of Lewiston back in there. I don't have what section that was in, but the appropriate section from which it was removed.
Is that a motion? So, you're making a motion to make employment, residency of the city a requirement of employment by the city?
That's correct. And if I need to specify whether the current people who work there, you know, it's from now forward, because there's obviously no way that we could take decades of not paying attention to that requirement and suddenly require it, does that need to be in there? I mean, does that stipulation need to be in there?
It's your amendment.
With this, okay, then I move that with this current version of the policy manual, the requirement for city employees to be a resident of Lewiston be reinstated.
And effective from hiring from this point forward?
Yeah, with this addition of the manual.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to require residency of the city for employment from this date forward. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Daniel.
To me, it just makes sense. You know, we're not, we're not the town the size of Peck or anything like that. We actually have, we, we have a college, we have several manufacturing plants, you know, we have qualified, highly educated individuals that can live in the City of Lewiston that we can choose from. If they're going to work for us, they should have a stake in us. And that's just, you know, how can they really have a real true say in what their pay should be if they're not actually paying into it, per se? I mean, that's the point of, when you work for the public, is you kind of have a stake in actually what's going on. And I just think that we're big enough, you know, we may not be Spokane, but we're not a tiny town either. And I, to me, it just makes sense.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Randall.
I think there's been some court cases decided, based on fire departments, that there's been an issue about that, where cities have tried to specify that they live within the city limits, and that the courts found against it, saying that they could specify, however, amount of time it took to respond, once they were called, to be there.
Which, which are policies...
So, I think that's the situation we have with our department heads. They have a criteria they set, where they have to be able to respond in a certain amount of time.
That's correct, Counsel. Departments such as police, fire, Public Works in particular, who have on-call personnel or 24/7 personnel, establish their departmental response times, so that they can ensure that the personnel that they need to be on hand at any given time can, can do that. I have to say that I, I completely disagree with this amendment. I think it precludes the city from hiring the best personnel that it can, which is our duty to the citizens, is to hire the best personnel that we can find to provide the jobs and the services that we provide to the community. I think that says it all.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Stevenson.
And respectfully, City Manager Bennett, I obviously disagree with you. And if we were in a more urban environment, it would be one thing, where people are much more able to live in a different town, you know, right close. That's not the case here. Most of the places that people are living, who are in the city, who live outside the city, are in Giuliani and out in the further, you know, Tammany and wherever. But I think that an awful lot of local areas, Moscow, for example, requires that of people, and I think it focuses the people on, yes, I want to do a good job for the city, and it's important enough to them that I live there, and I agree with that. And I think, Counselor Clebert, you can correct me, but wasn't this an issue for City Manager Prowse as well? He was also very intent on having people be city residents. And the comparison with fire and those kinds of duties isn't quite equal, because those people are covered by collective bargaining agreements. Generally, the things that we're talking about in this manual are unclassified personnel.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ortman.
We've had our best discussion of discrimination right here. I can't think of a better discussion to have. I understand perfectly well that when I was looking to get a school bond passed, that there were a number of people who felt that the primary players in the game needed to live in the valley. I understood that, and needed to be in the city, paying taxes. But I also understand that there are physicians in Clarkston who have wives, who work over here, and who could, who are certainly capable of working for the city. Or any number of cases, we live, we have people who live in a sotin. So, my daughter can't live in a sotin, in a home that she, a very poor home compared to mine, but she lives there because that's what she can afford, and she teaches in Lewiston. Does she not get to teach in Lewiston, or not work for the city if she were qualified for a city job? What kind of zaniness is that? Potlatch employees have come from Clarkston forever. SEL people have gone back and forth to Pullman. They'd be laughing at us right now. I think there's a point at which we start to look a little foolish, and I think we've almost reached that level.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Stevenson.
Potlatch is not in the city limits, if I'm correct, right? So, that doesn't even apply, and...
Counselor Stevenson, I think that's even almost rude, sorry.
Am I right?
You're right, but the point is stupid.
And, and people do, I'm not saying that we require people who already are working, as your relative may be, I'm saying from this forward, because we've ignored this provision that was in the handbook forever, as long as, you know, a couple of decades, it hasn't been enforced.
Mr. Mayor?
But other surrounding communities do the same. Moscow, as an example.
Counsel, Counselor Daniel.
Oliver.
City Attorney Schruckler.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one of the reasons that those particular requirements have been dropped have to do with freedom of movement, constitutional issues. They allow people to reside where they want to reside, move in a manner that they want to move, things that affect commerce and freedom of association. I think those are serious considerations that the council should take under advisement if you're going to pass something that requires people to live within the city limits. I cannot, and have been unable to find, any legitimate governmental reason for the city to make that requirement.
As someone who's read lately a lot of job descriptions and requirements, they're very explicit about when you're reporting times and what's required of you. They don't care where you live, but they want to make darn sure that when you report that it's in Pullman, or it's in Coeur d'Alene, or it's in wherever, and that here's the hours of your expected work, and that what's your percentage of time for travel, and other things. They're pretty explicit about what your time is. But I've yet to see a job description that says you have to live in that city. And so, for those reasons, I'm not in support of that amendment. Counselor Daniel.
I have a couple of things. First, so I guess, to be clear, is it your position that this could be legally challenged in court? We could be...
Yes.
Okay. I will, I'll make a comment first, and then I'll, I want to make a comment. If our city attorney, she is our legal counsel, and she's saying that it could be legally challenged, and it's her position that this is a bad idea from a legal standpoint, then I withdraw my second.
Okay. With that, is there any other second to the amendment? With that, the amendment fails for lack of a second. With that, we are back to resolution 2013-1 as amended. Is there any other discussion by council? Counselor Daniel.
Just that I will be voting against it. I, once again, don't agree with putting people into groups. I understand it's what has been done for decades now. I don't agree with it. I don't, I think it can, it just makes things worse in the long run, and it just creates division in, in society, and it really has no net benefit in my mind. You can't, I know we're not making a law, but we are passing a change in our policy. You can't legislate morality. It just, it doesn't happen.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of approving resolution 2013-1 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two. Okay. Resolution 2012-53 has been removed and tabled till April work session, is that correct? That's for the Canyon Crest?
You actually have to take it off the table and do that.
Have to take...
Right.
And then we retable it to the first meeting in April.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we table resolution 2012-53 until the work session in April.
I think the process is to take resolution 2012-53 off the table...
Off the table.
And retable till the work session of April.
Off the table.
And retable till the work session in April.
Actually, to the first council meeting.
To the first, or work session, or council meeting?
Council meeting.
In April.
Right.
Okay. Clear on the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to take resolution 2012-53 off the table and retable till the first council meeting in April. Any discussion?
I did just have, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Counselor Ortman.
I want to say that after the work session, and I went home, and one of the things that I reflected upon there was the great deal of courtesy on the part of the staff in Lewiston working with the developers. I don't know where this is going to go, or how it's going to play out, but I felt that the rapport that has been established there was one which the best ideas could come. And want to congratulate all the parties, both the developer and the city, for looking at ways that we could possibly save money. It's one of those cases that if we were able to move reserves from one place to another, we could save 1.1 million dollars, and this is a pretty darn good place where we might not save 1.1 million dollars thanks to our constraints. But nonetheless, there are good heads out there working on this one.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Mayor, maybe a short break?
Five-minute break.
Mr. Mayor, before a quick break?
Yes.
I'm wondering if mine may be excused.
You may be excused.
I, I see that we have an executive session scheduled, and I don't think it would be a good idea to be doing that over the phone, so...
Okay. We're not done with the... We're not done yet. We still have ordinance 4591, the two vouchers payable, and item 891.
Would you prefer that I stay for those?
That's your, your call. You're going to do a five-minute recess, we're still in the air.
Okay, I'll stay. I'm just concerned I'm going to get locked in the parking.
I'm just concerned I'm going to get locked in the parking.
Okay, welcome. We'll reconvene from another five-minute break. Next item of business is potential first reading of Ordinance 4591 enacting a new section to be codified as Section 2-5 regarding the initiative measure. Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the first reading of Ordinance 4591 and it's anticipated that we would have three separate readings on this ordinance if it's approved. The ordinance is the codification ordinance, if you will, of the initiative measure that was passed by the voters at the last general election in November. Our belief is that we have condensed the original initiative language so that it more properly fits our city code and the language that is established within the city code and that it maintains all of the essential elements of the initiative measure, which most specifically were prohibiting fund balance transfers between funds, requiring that ascent, that excess funds that are accumulated by the city after prudent reserves are established would be returned to the voters. Those were the two essential elements of the initiative measure that were approved by the voters in November. So with that, I will stand open for any questions. We've reviewed this in a work session, I think on one or two occasions. I have reviewed the language with the proponents of the initiative measure, Mr. Estes and Mr. Cron, who's here this evening. They both had testimony at the beginning of the meeting tonight, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
With that, what we'll do to get this going is I'll entertain a motion to read Ordinance 4591 for the first time.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we read Ordinance 4591 for the first time.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 4591 for the first time. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Daniel.
Since it is the first reading, do I have to do, if I want to amend something, do I do it now or do I...
You can do it. You got three times at it.
Okay, so I can try it now then. All right. On Section 2-79.3, I would like the words "majority vote of the city council" to be replaced with unanimous vote of the attending city council. That's a motion, sorry. I move that we replace the words "majority vote of the city council" with unanimous vote of the attending city council.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to change the words for, to reflect instead of majority vote to unanimous vote of the attending...
Of the attending, yes.
Of the attending. Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Kleber.
To follow up on 29, or 279 dot four, down on the bottom of that, shouldn't that be...
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I, can I amend my motion since you're my seconder? Change 2-79.4 as well to read the same. Get rid of the majority vote of the city council and replace it with unanimous vote of the attending city council.
Okay. Any discussion by council? Personally, I'd be voting against the amendment. We don't have any other unanimous vote that were required to by council and in fact, I think City Attorney Shropshire, you said you found a section of code that addresses some sections here that's already in city code.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there is presently state code 50-1006 and hidden in the middle of a very large paragraph, and I did not reproduce it, I apologize for it, did not know if it would come up tonight. There is a provision that allows the city council to declare an emergency with a vote of one half plus one members of the quorum present. And so that section already exists and it exists for casualties, for natural disasters. There are some provisions in that, in that particular statute that provide that the city council must, that emergency can only last until, through the next fiscal year and in the next fiscal year it has to be budgeted, be repaid in some form or put on the tax rolls so that the, that property taxes are increased to cover whatever that emergency was. But that's the only place, and we found that almost by accident, that we've been able to determine whether or not, what kind of vote is actually, is provided in any place in statute for declaring an emergency.
Counselor Daniel.
Now, would we be able to be stricter than our Idaho code since we're our own policy setting body? Couldn't we be stricter than...
It's not mandatory language, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's permissive language.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Orton.
I'm sorry.
Are you, Counselor Daniel, go ahead.
Well, I guess it's important for me to say why I made the motion. The reason is I think that goes along with the true intent of the voters. You know, if we leave it as a majority, what's to stop the majority of the council? Let's say it was a four to three vote to saying, oh, well, if we don't spend money on this project, we'll lose our place in line and that'd be a financial disaster. So we're going to declare this an emergency and we'll transfer those funds. That completely defeats the purpose of the initiative that was passed. You know, it passed, we have to live with it. We should at least go along with the true intent, which was to limit our ability to do that.
Counselor Orton.
Mr. Mayor, I'll respond to that in just a second. Jamie, on this, there is a provision that emergency changes or it's something that's done because of an emergency can only go the one year and then has to be dealt with in a totally different way, right? So there's a term on emergency...
It goes through the next fiscal year, but if by the, in the next fiscal year, you have to make, I can look it up for you just real quick here, accommodations to pay it off or increase the taxes in order to pay off whatever that amount of money is.
So that could be done, that would be done by a majority vote?
That's by majority vote. That's simply by majority vote. That's correct.
You know, I, I think that, I can't imagine anybody in this council or anybody in City Hall who would purposefully go out and declare an emergency and be subject to public scrutiny if in fact there were not an emergency. I, you know, fabricating one so that we could qualify for a particular grant or to have matching funds, et cetera, probably doesn't constitute an emergency. That constitutes a desire and that's a whole different item. I can't imagine anybody doing that. If you look at the definitions of emergency, I just don't think that falls in it.
Counselor Daniel.
I agree. I don't think, I don't think any, anybody at the city or on the council would fabricate an emergency, but there's all, there's sometimes differences of opinion on what is and what is not an emergency and that's why I think it should be unanimous of those attending because as you said, I don't think any city councillor, if it's a true emergency, will vote no. And that, that way we keep with the intent, we don't have to worry about the, the council 10 years from now who happens to be like, oh, well, we'll just, you know, we'll just declare an emergency, no big deal. That's how, that's how we'll do it because by then everything would have quieted down. Nobody, nobody would have even remembered this initiative because it's just going to be part of city code by then and they'll be like, oh, well, how can we, how can we get this money? Let's do it this way. I'm not saying this council would do that, I'm not even saying the next council, but maybe five councils from now they might. And that's, that's the intent of my motion was to, to keep in line with what the voters voted for, which was to limit our ability to transfer those funds.
Mayor, I think it's fair to point out though that in the initiative language that was approved by the voters, it already in that language specifically allows for an exemption from that requirement in the case of an emergency. Nowhere in the initiative language does it say that when an emergency is declared that it has to be by unanimous vote. This is in addition to the language that's being proposed.
Pro Tem Cannon.
In the ordinance, 4591, at the end, it says, and providing for definitions, providing for an effective date. Definitions, and exactly what the ordinance said, exactly, word to word, and definitions to the ordinance, an emergency exists when there is a great public calamity such as an extraordinary fire, flood, storm, epidemic, or other disasters, or is necessary to do emergency work to prepare for the local or national safeguard or to safeguard life, health, and property. This council heard from the citizens of Lewiston. We want to make sure this does exactly what they want it to do. Having a unanimous vote, as I agree with Mr. Bennett, has nothing to do with the ordinance, nothing to do with the initiative. That could come back and bite you both ways. What you're, what you're explaining is fine, but that could come back the other way also where somebody would not unanimously vote for that. And then we're going to be in a world of hurt if we have a major flood in downtown Lewiston or something and we need money. Ah, it's only four foot of water, we'll get it done, we'll get through it. It's going to come back and bite you the other way. So unanimous vote in my eye is not a good idea for this. We heard what they said. We're not going to pull money out of anything, believe you me. I won't to do anything in this city unless it's budgeted for. So it's in there, the definition's in there. I don't see how it can be interpreted any different as the initiative said. I don't see how that can be interpreted any different. Okay? So it's there, it's in there. We haven't taken it out, we haven't struck anything out of it or anything. But unanimous vote, there's not a unanimous vote on this council for anything, in the state of Idaho for anything, nationally anything, a unanimous vote. Unanimous vote for a city councillor. Boy, that's quite a, that'd be a heck of a deal, wouldn't it? It's just not going to, I, in my eye, that's just not going to happen. That's just not fair. That's just not, that's just not fair to the council and it's not fair to the citizens of the city of Lewiston.
I'm not in support of the amendment just because, one, unanimous vote basically gives power and you're basically subject to tyranny by the minority. The minority, that's the whole thing. The, the initiative was passed by a majority vote and I think that for future councils to tie their hands to a unanimous vote on something that normally should take a majority vote is, is unfair and unreasonable. And I think that what you need to look at is the true intent. That's why there's seven of us here. A lot of times, you know, we've had some 7-0 votes tonight, we've had some 4-3 votes and 5-2, but it's after contemplation. This group doesn't take things lightly, I can tell you that, as a group. And I think that it's important that we don't tie our hands to give power to the minority to let, to require a unanimous vote. I think that a majority vote is more reasonable and more prudent in, in dealing with this. And I completely agree with Pro Tem Cannon. The, the initiative passed, we heard the voters and we're going to enact these things, but there was a couple of things that weren't talked about and there's nothing in the initiative that said it has to be unanimous vote. And so what we thought was prudent to state what kind of a vote, to define, and it's just majority vote, just like everything else we do here on a council. I, I think that that's very reasonable and very prudent and to do anything otherwise like unanimous vote, again, like I said, puts you to the tyranny of the minority and I don't think that's a very wise way to go.
Counselor Daniel.
You know, this is a rare thing for me, but I am, Counselor Cannon makes a good point about the possibility is of, if we did have an emergency, of having that one person that decides to be like, oh, it's not my problem, it's the downtown people or, oh, it's the orchards and that's, that's their problem up there. I don't, I'm going to vote no. So this is kind of a rare, rare deal for me, but I do believe there should be tighter restraints than a majority, so maybe something else, but I will draw my motion, thanks to Counselor Cannon.
Motion, Counselor Kleber.
It was just a note that I'd made from the last meeting that we had at the work session that had been brought up, so that's why I reminded Counselor Daniel about the second section there and I did second it for the sake of discussion because I didn't know if we were going to get a second and I haven't had a problem either way, so.
Mr. Mayor. Pro Tem Cannon.
I know that a couple of comments tonight about how the initiative was written and that's what the voters voted on, that language. Jamie, that language needed to be worked a little bit in order to get it codified in the right Idaho code. Is that, is that why we've, and I don't know what, you know, maybe go over what we've done, but everything essentially is basically there that the people voted on, correct?
Correct.
Nothing has changed.
That's correct.
Okay.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, members of the...
I just want to make sure that's right. So, so people will understand and people, well, they're all in bed now, so they're not listening, but, but, but I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure that people understand that the language that's there needed to be tweaked a little bit in order to get it into Idaho code, correct?
Well, if I might, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it simply could not be codified the way we would send something to the codifier that does our city code in the format that it was. And so we just reorganized it a little bit, but took this, everything straight out of the initiative and the language. The, the majority vote was added in there, but it's not something that's contrary to the, the initiative, it's just simply how you do business as a, as a council, so.
Okay.
I mean, I, in or out, you would simply do business in the same way unless you obviously decide to do something different, but that was...
But as I read this, but as I read this...
It's the same.
Initiative and everything, the language is all there.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there is, I'm sorry, there's one exception. The one exception is standing.
Here, here. I'm sorry.
The one exception is the standing issue and, and the initiative would grant standing to any citizen of the city of Lewiston to challenge the initiative. And the reason that, that I took that out is because, as you're all aware, we have a number of citizens who do not pay city water or city sewer services. And so to allow those people, I mean, it was, it's just kind of a, we couldn't allow them standing simply because they don't pay into the funds that are in question. If we were to, for instance, the issue transfer something, sanitation fund to the water fund, a court would look at somebody who doesn't pay into those funds trying to challenge it and say, you don't have standing, you didn't, you have nothing, no money involved in this. And so it's always, in my opinion, better to let a court determine who has standing and that's one of the issues that they will initially look at in any case, but certainly if somebody paid the fee, paid into the fee or paid a special tax somehow in the city of Lewiston... in the city of Lewiston, and they wanna challenge whether or not the city is doing something correctly.
Yeah, they're right.
They, they could have standing. If they have.
So you're protecting those people who pay into the fees?
We're actually.
And, yeah.
It's, it would be the equivalent of giving somebody in the city of Clarkston.
Right.
Standing to come question something that happened in Lewiston, when you.
Right, okay. And that makes sense.
Any other discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Stevenson.
I thought I heard, uh, City Manager Bennett say that the wording was condensed.
It, it has been. We, we have.
So that means it's not the same.
It's not, no, it's not identical to the original language that was in the initiative measure.
But everything is still in there.
Yes.
All of the essential elements that the initiative was predicated on, which is, one, outlining any fund transfers between funds, two, requiring that any excess funds that are accumulated by the city are returned to the voter, and three, providing an exception for emergencies only, those are all essential parts of the ordinance that we have put together. And that's what the voters voted on.
Yeah. It's actually that the excess fees and taxes should be refunded to those who paid the fees, not to the voters.
Right. That, that's one of the modifications that we made, was that the fees, if they are refunded, should go back to the people that paid them.
Right.
Uh, not just to somebody who happens to be a citizen of the community.
Okay. Any other discussion by counsel? Counselor Daniel.
You know, I was one that really wanted the exact language to be in there, but is that, is the, does our city attorney, is, there's no way that we could adopt the language as it was, as it was voted on?
Well, the initiative passed, it is in fact an ordinance now, I mean, basically. The difficulty is, we have to send what we pass as the city council, we send that off to the codifier. We send the initiative in the format that it is off to the codifier, I'll be on the phone with him for a long time. Um, and so we just made the determination to put it into a format that the codifier will take, is familiar with, will read, that looks like everything else we send off to the codifier. So it's not that the language is different, I mean, there's some redundancies taken out in the other couple of things we talked about, it's just that, um, I don't have a lot of time to spend on the phone with the codifier trying to explain to him how to put that into our code somewhere.
Counsel Orman.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I think it's a serious enough issue that one of the things that we all have to do is to look at it carefully, and so the very first thing I did was to take the initiative and take the resolution and go line by line and say, you know, where can I find this? Where is this same thing said? It might be said in a different word, but it's nice, there's very little that is, um, a deviation, and nothing, nothing really is a deviation, there is some wording change, but you can find every element that's in the, uh, initiative, in the ordinances that are proposed.
Counselor Randall.
Are we gonna be voting on his proposal, or?
No, he withdrew it.
This is just the first reading.
He withdrew it? Yeah, so, right now, it's first reading of ordinance forty-five ninety-one.
So it's, so it's open for amendment?
That's what we're voting on, whether to read.
Yeah, that's what we're discussing right now, reading forty, ordinance forty-five ninety-one for the first time.
Whether to read it.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, we'll be reading it two more times, so we've got, uh, a couple more council meetings to.
And we were really clear that we will do it on two other separate occasions.
Yes, yes, it'll be three separate readings.
That gives us time to look at it and to reread it and to make sure that we're in total agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Stevenson.
My objection is, is more of a public relations problem, and that is that it, it appears that we're dithering and that we're not giving the voters satisfaction from the, how they wrote their initiative and how voters voted for it, and, and that makes me uneasy, and, um, I, I view that as a public relations problem, and that if, you know, we, we need to be careful, um, by specifying that the language is slightly different, uh, because if we try to say that it's exactly the same, it's not, and somebody will just say that. So anyway, I think we've got a public relations, um, gap to perhaps, um, uh, correct with the voters.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure them that there's, we're not, um, dragging our feet or changing what they voted on, that type of thing.
Counsel Orman.
I think we had a clear, um, statement from our attorney that says it is an ordinance now, what we're doing is getting it into a language that's acceptable for the code, it's already there. We, we would, if something were to happen tomorrow, we'd have to live by this.
And I have to say, we've worked diligently to make sure that the essence of the initiative measure, what the voters voted on and wanted to see enacted into, uh, city ordinance, was we kept faithful to that, to put it into an ordinance that, you know, and there's no attempt here to deceive the public or to, or to try and pull the wool over anyone's eyes. It's simply an attempt to put the ordinance in a format that we can use and that is faithful to the original initiative measure as it was passed by the voters.
Any further discussion for reading ordinance forty-five ninety-one for the first time?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Daniel.
I just have a question. Um, it was a question that was brought up quite a few times, I never, I guess, quite got the answer. In the, um, section two dash seven nine point three, um, it says, "Shall be refunded to those who paid such excess fees or special taxes." How does that, how does that work? If you had, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars, and that was deemed excess, how would you refund that?
That's a great question.
Because, you know, people pay at different levels and different amounts.
We haven't figured out the logistics on that one yet, although Dan Marsh and I have looked at that and said, okay, that would take a little bit of doing, we'll have to figure out exactly how we will put that together. I guess we would use the same model that we used with the stormwater refund.
Okay.
It took us a while to figure out how to calculate that, but we could do it.
Okay.
It could be kind of a first in, first out. Uh, the first in tax dollars you get are the first out, it's paid, and if whatever's excess is whatever's the most recent.
Maybe a percent of what you paid, I'm guessing, probably, I mean, totally.
Yeah, they'd have to come up with some way of, of dealing with it, yeah. I guess if we could figure it out for stormwater, we can do it for other fees. Counselor Daniel.
Well, I'm sure I'm gonna have some further, well, I may have some further amendments in the, uh, at the next, at the second and third reading. I am prepared to vote for this at this point, though.
I guess I just encourage counselors to, uh, do just as Counselor Orman has done, and I've done the same thing, is took the initiative and went through it line by line, and the spirit and intent of the initiative is there with the exception of standing, which I think was, is something that I completely agree with, city attorney, that if, if someone is going to be able to sue, that they need to show improved damage, that they, they just don't have to be present and breathing air, so. Anyway, any other further comment or discussion?
Hearing none, those in favor of reading ordinance forty-five ninety-one for the first time, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Seven one, or seven zero?
A reading of ordinance forty-five ninety-one by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston enacting a new section to be codified as section two five, which codifies the initiative measure on the usage and levying of fees approved at the general election on November sixth, two thousand twelve. Amending section two five to two dash seventy-nine, providing for definitions and providing an effective date.
Okay. Ordinance forty-five ninety-one has been read for the first time. Again, like I said, we'll have two more council meetings to, uh, give it the second and third reading, possible adoption. Next item of business is vouchers payable, approving the Albertsons' vouchers payable dated November twenty-second, two thousand twelve through December twenty-seventh, in an amount of twenty-nine dollars and one cent. I entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertsons', uh, with Counselor Daniel abstaining for conflict of interest. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six-zero with Counselor Daniel abstaining. Next item of business is vouchers payable, approving Hawn Rental, Hawn Supply vouchers payable dated November twenty-second through December twenty-seventh, and December twenty-eighth through January third, in an amount of six thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and sixteen cents. I entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Hawn Rental, Hawn Supply for six thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars, sixteen cents, with Counselor Kleberg abstaining due to conflict of interest.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve vouchers payable to Hawn Rental, Hawn Supply. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six-zero with Counselor Kleberg abstaining. Next item of business is grant application recreational's trail, recreational trails program. Mr. Barker, this must be yours.
All right. I, um, came and talked to you guys at a council work session, um, November twelfth, regarding four different opportunities we had for grants that we were gonna apply for potentially. Uh, we've narrowed that down, and we're gonna be applying for two separate grants and not all four. Uh, the two that I'm gonna be discussing with you tonight are the community park trail phase, uh, the final phase grant is the first one that we'll discuss. Uh, this is, let me get a map out here for you. We've had three different phases so far that we've developed on the community park property. Let's see there. Have to go to the very top there. Okay. We've had three different phases that we've built up at Community Park on Warner. Uh, the first three phases began in two thousand four as part of our original LWCF grant that we received, uh, from Idaho State Parks. And, uh, the initial development was this first section down here, uh, down and around the southeast corner of the property. Uh, the second grant moved us up further towards the north, along, um, the east side of the property. Phase three, which we completed in two thousand eleven, moved us along the south, southern edge of the property, over and connected up to Park Avenue. Uh, last year, uh, this wasn't part of a trail grant, it was a separate, uh, project that we put together, was a sidewalk that extended up north. Uh, this would be a sidewalk that goes along what would be the future of Eleventh Street roadway, that I'll discuss in a little bit. So this portion of the prop, this portion of the project would be our final stage of completing a full circle around the park, and it would begin here, uh, towards the northwest corner, up towards the north portion, and across and connect up to where the pathway currently ends over here on the northeast side. So, um, that is, uh, this grant. Uh, again, it's through State Parks and Rec, it's a, a recreational trail fund that develops this program. This would be a three thousand seven hundred and thirty-foot trail that's ten-foot wide asphalt, uh, would also include landscaping along the side, which would be, uh, we'd have about a hundred trees that we'd be, that we'd be planting, along with irrigation along the edge of that. Uh, the project total cost is estimated at a hundred and fifty thousand, two sixty. Uh, what we're gonna be applying for is, it's an eighty-twenty grant, so eighty percent of the funds can come from, uh, the State Park Fund, and then twenty percent needs to be a local match. What we're doing with the application is we're requesting seventy-two percent, which would be a hundred and eight thousand, two sixty, and our local match would be twenty-eight percent, which is gonna be about forty-two thousand. Reason why we tend to try to do that is typically if you meet the eighty-twenty, if you only meet the twenty, um, it's a standard application, it's, it's appropriate, but if you can show that there's a little more community support and backing, you tend to get boosted up a couple extra points. Uh, so with these grants, they're very competitive around the state, so any additional points that you can earn any way you can, it's well worth it. Uh, major funding for this locally is gonna be coming from Potlatch Number One Federal Credit Union. Uh, to date, they've given us seventy thousand dollars towards the trail. They initially, um, told us that they would commit to a total of a hundred thousand. So for this project alone, they're gonna be giving us thirty thousand of the forty-two thousand. The other twelve thousand will come from, um, our labor and materials, we can use that as match, and so it would be staff time that we're already, um, committing for the fiscal year, and, um, the additional materials would be purchased just out of our regular operating budget. Uh, there would be no additional, uh, requests through, um, the budgeting process, we would just, if this became a, a two, twenty-fourteen project, we would just adjust our budget internally, so then it wouldn't show that there was an increased request for that, to complete this. Uh, so staff is, uh, like, this is our, uh, second attempt at applying for this grant. Like I said, it's very competitive. A lot of the, what's really interesting with these recreational trail funds is they're based off of, uh, there's three or four different types of recreational trails. This is a non-motorized trail, so we're in the non-motorized category, and actually what is given to non-motorized is based off of motorized, if it makes sense. If there's more requests for motorized, there's a higher opportunity and chance for non-motorized funds to be available. If there's less motorized requests, then there's less available in non-motorized. Doesn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense, but, um, just trying to keep things even is how they, how they manage that program. And in the last couple of years, there's been a reduction in, in motorized requests, so the non-motorized funds available have been, have been dropped down.
So it's illegal for me to take my four-wheeler down there and buzz it around?
That's kind of what I'm leading towards.
That was you?
That's kind of what I'm hinting at, yes. Yeah.
Can't use Doon's.
So, so basically, out of a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars of, uh, uh, project funding, uh, our out-of-pocket expense for the city's about twelve thousand.
It's about twelve thousand, which includes labor.
So it's about ten percent.
Yep.
And we've got private, uh, funding, contributions helping with this.
Correct.
Thirty thousand worth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from counsel?
Santa Claus doesn't come often.
I entertain a motion to approve the grant application for recreational trails program. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the grant application for the recreational trails programs, are any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. Next item of business is grant application recreational road and bridge fund grant. Mr. Parker.
All right. So this is the second grant that we're applying for this year. Uh, just so you know, the other two grants that we were gonna apply for were Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, which, uh, we've utilized in the past in a number of different locations, uh, within the city. Uh, I didn't feel like we were quiet at the time that we were ready with other products that we had going on to, to reply during this go-around. We have plenty of other things that, uh, infrastructure-wise, that we need to get in place up at Community Park and focus on, focus our energy on. So we're passing on that right now, and then the other grant was the, uh, RV grant through State Parks. Uh, if you kind of kept up with, um, they had, uh, done a write-up in the Tribune at the end of December, noting that FAA wasn't in full support because of location proximity to the, uh, flight zone, and so that we weren't getting, um, support from FAA at the regional level, so we've, uh, decided to not apply for that grant this year. Uh, we went ahead and, uh, completed, uh, a lot of, all of our initial design, um, plans, so then we can table a project in case we wanna utilize it or put it in elsewhere. Uh, so that's where we were at on both of those. Uh, this is, um, a road and bridge fund. Uh, this isn't, like I said, another State Park Fund. Um, this would be, go into the map, on the west side of the project, uh, you can see here, Park Avenue that was already completed, uh, a few years ago, has gone in, and it actually curves a little bit, this looks pretty straight. Uh, but what it would be doing is it would be constructing a roadway heading north on Eleventh, that provides access to our community ballfield area, uh, which you can see here as we noted as, um, a fourplex, Little League complex, and we have four soccer fields for community use, uh, about a two-hundred stall parking lot, uh, we would have concession stand areas, restroom facilities, and also if we ended up developing the amphitheater here, it would provide access to that. So it provides access to the central portion of what this project is, is really showing. Just to give an overall view so people know, the boundaries of Just to give an overall view, so people know, the boundaries of, of where our development is on this site, as far as a partner, is through the center portion of the property here, along the east side, you can see a number of different fields, and then we have an adult softball complex down here, and also includes the wetland area along the, the edges down, down through the east side in the canyon. So, what this would be doing is, like I said, constructing, constructing Eleventh Street roadway. The estimated budget for this project is about five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We're requesting three hundred thousand in grants. That's the maximum that we can request in this, through this fund. It is a one-hundred percent grant, so if our project was under three hundred or three hundred, then we wouldn't need, necessarily need a match, but since the cost is over that, our local match would be two hundred and seventy-six thousand and twenty dollars. And what we're proposing is that would be split between the partners. This is a joint venture on this. It's applied for by the city, but the expenses would be paid and split among the three different partners. As you can see here, it does provide access up to what's noted as the LCSC site at this point. It's, it almost gets you to that, almost gets you up, up to provide that access roadway there. Our local, what we would utilize is our, our park, Community Park Fund that has been supported by council previously in the tune of a hundred thousand a year. We do have some money in there that we could use to pay our portion of what that roadway would, would cost.
Mr. Parker?
Yep.
LCSC and, and the school district on board with this?
They are, yeah. Yeah, we meet monthly, as try partnerships, or we try to meet monthly. We meet and discuss ongoing projects. This is something I took to them last, well, last month in December. We knew that this was coming up, and this is one of those basic infrastructure features that is a necessity, we all feel, to be able to start developing the parkland up there and if there's any other future development by the other two entities at some point. Basic infrastructure is obviously something we need. The ballfields and access to soccer and baseball fields is a big need in the community right now. We've been working with the Little League and soccer clubs in, in looking at developing those locations and them being able to providing funding to be able to do that as well. So, this roadway would provide that access. A lot of people in the community may not understand or realize that a majority of our fields are on leased property, however minimal or not that, that it is, depending on the lease situation that we're in. But very few of our fields in the community are actually on city-owned property that is for our use. Examples are Pepsi Park is on Pepsi property, Pepsi Bottling Company, Idaho Beverage. And across the way, Clearwater Baseball Field and the Babe Ruth Field are both on Corps of Engineer property. So, if at any time those entities wanted to utilize that property for something else, we would have to vacate those sites. Another advantage for those developments to go in at Community Park is the fact that they're below the water table. And so, we're constantly battling with rain issues and nowhere for the water to drain in the spring. And typically, if we could, if we could survive and not play baseball in North Lewiston till May, it would be a lot better on us, a lot easier. But we got to come up with other alternatives.
Parker?
Uh-huh.
Now, you're also on those, reason we're building that Community Park with the baseball fields and stuff, isn't that to consolidate it, so the folks only have one place to go?
It is, yeah. And as we, we've gone through some discussions the last couple of years regarding Airport Park, when Community Park was initially purchased, there was land and water conservation fund dollars attached to Airport Park. And when we purchased the property at Community Park, we set a set amount of acreage aside so then we could take the requirements from LWCF. LWCF, when you purchase anything, that needs to be utilized in perpetuity as an outdoor recreation use. So, that was tied to the property at Airport Park for a number of years until about two thousand and six, when we were able to, to move that over to Community Park, property that we were no longer leasing, that was city, city property. So, if we had to vacate, if the airport wanted to expand, or if we chose to move those fields and centralize everything in one location, there's no more requirement by LWCF to Airport Park. So, that was one major advantage. But like Mr. Randall had said, our, our goal is to centralize everything. It's right near our shop where all of our equipment's at. It's a lot more efficient for us, especially on the ballfield side, if we can co-locate everything.
Any questions from council? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the grant application for the recreational road and bridge grant fund grant.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant application for the recreational road and bridge fund grant. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. We'll move on to unfinished and new business. Is there any city council comments this evening?
I dare you.
No, no takers? City manager, Mr. Bennett?
In the, in the essence of time, I, I don't think I have any comments this evening.
Okay. Advisory Board and Commission appointments. Counselor Orman?
Mr. Mayor, I wish that you would bring forward the name of Brienne Durmond for a position on the Historic Preservation Board. That's been reviewed by the board, as I indicated that in our last work session. Have had no opposition to that at any point, so I would bring that name forward.
Been recommended to council to approve Brienne Durham's appointment to the Historical Preservation. Preservation Commission. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero. Appointment stands.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a position open on the Urban Renewal Agency Board with the election of Mr. Tippett to the county. That left us with two county commissioners on the board. We can only, only need one. So, Mr. Tippett did resign, and so we do have that opening to fill. We do have one application, but if anybody's interested, please contact Carey at City Hall and get the application filled out. We'll do that for a month, and then next month we'll appoint him.
Counselor Daniel?
I have a recommendation for, for TAC. I move that we accept Vern Owens. I had a lot of wonderful things to say about him, but I'm wiped out right now, so I, so I can't remember most of them, but I, I sat down with him. He has a tremendous resume, and he's going to be a perfect fit, so.
I read through his resume. I didn't have the opportunity to, to, to meet with him, but I agree, concur with your, your recommendation. So, with that, those in favor of Mr. Owens' appointment to the Transportation Advisory Commission, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero. Any other advisory board and commission appointments? Okay. Work session agenda topics? Counselor Daniel?
I don't know if it's necessarily a work session, or it could be solved in an email or just a nod up and down right now from Chief Orr, but I've read recently in a lot of news articles that a lot of police departments around the nation are coming up short in their ammunition supply as far as training goes because of the recent shortages. They're not so much short on the short term, but more at the six-month thinking, and I was just curious where, where we sit. I don't know if that's something...
That's not a new problem that we've experienced. We've experienced that for about the last twenty-four months.
Okay.
It's even having a supplier right here in town, it's difficult to get ammunition in a timely manner. So, we've been placing our orders far in advance, and right now, we're maintaining a, a stockpile of what we need.
Okay. Here we go.
Counselor Orman?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, Alexa, do we have a tour connected with this board meeting for the library?
We do. Three fifteen on Wednesday.
Everything on Wednesday.
Anytime you want.
Okay, thank you. Five meters.
Bring your hard head or your hard hat? Or both?
Any other work session agenda topics?
I believe, Mr. Mayor, Alexa, is, is the architect going to address this council on the progress of the library at our next board, at our next council meeting?
January twenty eighth.
January twenty eighth. Excellent. Everybody tune in. It'll be good.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session regarding land acquisition per Idaho Code, Section six, seven, dash, two, three, four, five, one, C.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session in reference to land acquisition per Idaho Code, Section sixty-seven, two, three, four, five, one, C.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session regarding land acquisition per Idaho Code, Section six, seven, dash, two, three, four, five, one, C. Those, any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero. We will not reconvene. We'll adjourn immediately after. There'll be no decisions after. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is that the, not a public meeting, I will...